Yes, he does.
Listen, the plumbers, the plumbers have said that threshold pretty high for the compensation.
Are we overpaying?
How much do you think?
Twenty-five.
That's good.
I don't know.
Really?
I feel like we really overpay babysitters.
I feel like we overpay babysitters, too.
Just because I can't, I've never gotten a straight answer, so I just make sure that there, that there's no way they're going to.
And Lincoln is different.
And I give them the five.
Seriously? You pay five bucks for a read?
Yeah, you don't want to be up there.
We don't have anyone. At least we're here.
No, he doesn't need any type of counsel support. That's what he is. A legal counsel.
Okay, I will go ahead and call our city council meeting to order for the record. It is Tuesday, May fourteenth at three o'clock. This is the workshop for city council. We'll start with roll call attendance. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Here.
Councilmember Burnt.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilmember Borton.
Here.
Mayor DeVere. Here. Item number two is pledge of allegiance. If you will all rise in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
We're going to make one change on the consent agenda. We're going to pull item I and move that to eight. Make that a eight A, I guess. That's the only change, so I would move we adopt the agenda as amended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, wish carried. Item number four is announcements. We do have fill the booth, which is Thursday, the sixteenth. It's from nine to four. And our firefighters will be at the intersection of Locust Grove and Fairview. Saturday, the eighteenth, is National Kids to Parks Day. And so please encourage those that you know to go out and experience our parks. VRT has an open house on public transportation Monday, the twentieth, from four to six, in conference rooms AMB here at City Hall. And invite you to come, give your input to them. And I see that our Parks Director gave you a lot of dates that are in handouts in front of you. And so please take a look at that information. I got it too late to read into the record. So is there any other announcements that all of you know of? Okay, hearing none. I do have a proclamation that I'll move to the podium and ask that Shannon McNally and her group, please join me. Thank you. So we are here to proclaim neurofibromatosis.
Neurofibromatosis.
Neurofibromatosis Awareness Month. Whereas neurofibromatosis NF causes tumors to grow on nerves throughout the body, which can affect development of the brain, cardiovascular system, bones and skin, and affects all populations equally, regardless of race, ethnicity, or gender. And whereas the Children's Tumor Foundation leads efforts to promote and financially sponsor world-class medical research aimed at finding effective treatments and ultimately a cure for NF. And whereas patient and family support is provided by the Children's Tumor Foundation through its information resources, youth programs, and local chapter activities. And whereas much remains to be done in raising public awareness to NF to help promote early diagnosis, proper management and treatment, prevention of complications, and support for research. And whereas the Children's Tumor Foundation is observing May seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, as World Neurofibromatosis Awareness Day to educate the public about this rare genetic disorder. That is why I Mayor Tammy DeVere proclaimed the month of May, two thousand nineteen, to be Neurofibromatosis Day NF Awareness Month in the city of Meridian and urge all of our community members to become informed and involved in the fight so we can manage, imagine a world without NF. And I will turn this over to Shannon to give a few remarks and to present this proclamation.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Do you want to? Hi. Thank you, everybody, for listening. And Mayor Tammy, thank you for having us here today. As she said, neurofibromatosis affects one in three thousand births. To put that a little bit in perspective, it's more common than Huntington's, Duchenne muscular dystrophy, and cystic fibrosis combined. So it's actually pretty common. The thing is that there's no cure and there's no effective treatment as of yet. So we have two of our little NF heroes with us. We have Savannah and my son Carson. When my son Carson was diagnosed with NF, I can't tell you as a parent what it means to hear that there's no treatment, there's no cure, there's nothing basically you can do. So what our family went and reached out and did is we started volunteering for the Children's Tumor Foundation. And we started about ten years ago. And in those ten years, I mean, it's just, I'm just ecstatic to say this, we have had proclamations all over the country. Meridian, this is the fourth year that you've done this, so thank you so much. We have buildings that shine a light for NF and Eighth and Main and the US Bank Building will be doing that this weekend. And we also have countless researchers for the Children's Tumor Foundation that I'm happy to say for the first time, the FDA is about to approve the first effective treatment ever for NF. And, oh, thank you. It's super exciting. And as a parent, when we first started volunteering, I think my hope was that they would find a cure for NF in our future generations. And I think because of what CTF is doing and the awareness that's being raised, they're going to find a cure in their generation. So thank you guys very much for having us. Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Thank you. Thank you. No, you can't get sweetheart. You guys. One, two, three. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Borton.
I move that we approve the amended consent agenda and for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. There is no discussion. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
All ayes, wish carried. Item seven is a community presentation by our Ada County Assessor, giving us our annual assessment briefing. But you don't look like Mr. McCabe, Quaid.
We'll see how it works out. There's going to be some numbers coming to you, so you can kind of read along.
Oh, thank you. Instead of trying to write them quickly.
Yeah, so you'll have basically all the numbers that we have so far. My name is Brad Smith. I'm the chief deputy for the Ada County Assessor's Office. Unfortunately, Bob McQuade was not able to be here as he's, he does approximately twenty of these, and this was one of the conflicting ones that he has. So I get the treat of coming out here to Meridian, which I don't get out too much since I live in Boise.
Well, thank you for coming west.
You're welcome. So it's shocking to see these numbers. And I'm sure you all live around it every day, so it's probably not going to be as shocking to you. But some of the numbers, just really large increases in residential, and I'll go ahead and get started. This presentation will only take about seven minutes, and then at the end, you'll have an opportunity to ask any questions that you'd like. So we'll be sending out assessment notices here in the next couple of weeks, right about Memorial Day weekend. And we'll be sending out to Meridian residents about forty-five thousand. And in total, we'll be sending out about two hundred thousand. And to say the least, we have some very large increases that are going to be happening across the county. So our office will be inundated with phone calls, because last year was a pretty big year, too. And this year's going to surpass that. One of the common questions that come up is how close are our property values, our assessments, to actual property sell prices? And that's a really good question. And there's a little misnomer to it that we might be ten, twenty, thirty percent on the conservative side. But it just so happens Idaho State Tax Commission, they review our ratios, and they, last year they took a look at thirteen thousand properties that had sold across Ada County, and they compare that to the assessment. And as you can see on the slide, last year, on the residential improved, we were ninety-seven percent, which means we were about three percent light. In two thousand eighteen, you can see we're starting to lose a little ground as the market's increasing as fast as it is. It's kind of difficult to keep up with what people are paying for properties. Commercial, we were at ninety-four last year, and this year we're at ninety-five. It hasn't increased as much, so we're able to kind of gain some ground there. And one thing to keep in mind, our lien date is January first, so when you get your assessment notice and you open it up and you look at that property value, keep in mind that's from almost six months ago. In this market, that's, that's a pretty long timeframe. As far as total market value, we're about fourteen and a half billion dollars. After we remove the homeowner's exemption and other exemptions, and then we add back in operating property that the tax commission does, ends up being about eleven point eight billion. And if you look at last year, you were about eight point four billion dollars. So that's a huge, I think, almost a forty percent increase. So that has potential to be a lot of increase, kind of off the charts for what we're used to. Focusing just on residential value, valuations. Last year, nine point one billion. This year, eleven point two. That's a twenty-three percent increase, which again, I mean, these are just, these numbers are kind of off the charts. Market trends, the median assessed value change in Meridian is about fourteen point six percent. And you're probably asking, why is that different than the twenty-three percent? The twenty-three percent includes the market appreciation plus all the new constructions, all the new residential homes that are going on the market. So you could say about eight percent of that is attributed to the new homes. Market drivers that we're seeing, you know, in migration, I mean, you look at the license plates, all the different, just a whole variety of license plates that we see around town. And I think we did some research last year, and about half the people are coming in just from the surrounding states around us. So it was kind of interesting to see where people are coming from. And the land, just same as the last market increase we had, you know, years ago, the land really drove that and also drove it back down, too. And again, this is the land that's driving it. So we saw land values going from thirty thousand over the years up to thirty, hundred thousand, hundred and twenty thousand. So your normal loss are just, the land's really increased a lot there. As far as commercial and personal property, commercial, like I stated earlier, it hasn't been increasing quite as much as residential. We're seeing about fourteen, fourteen point three percent increase. And on the personal property, which depreciates over the years based on schedules that we get from the tax commission, it's increasing at one point five percent. Normally, that would be going down, but the new personal property coming on the roll helps keep that kind of moving in the right direction. And overall, about thirteen point five percent. And normally, this would be pretty good, but compared to residential, it seems kind of light. Now, the new construction roll, this is what, if you're involved with the budgets, which I know you are, this is the factor that you can increase budgets with. As you can see, residential manufactured, almost forty-two percent, commercial sixty-two. But what's really crazy is new subdivisions and change of use. I mean, more than doubled. And overall, the new construction roll is sixty-three percent. And those numbers, again, these are numbers we don't typically see.
Madam Mayor. Sorry. Mr. Smith, I don't mean to interrupt your presentation.
Sure.
Can you help me? What do you mean by new subdivisions and change of use? Can you give us an example as to what that refers to?
Sure. So it's going to, there's going to be two scenarios. The new construction roll, basically, it's broken into different categories. And so a new subdivision is going to be coming from, we'll say, like, twenty acre parcel going in. So what we do is we take the value of what that raw parcel was prior to, and we compare it, and that's a subdivision. And then the change of use is where you might have some, a residential zone property, and it gets changed to, we'll say, a commercial. So it's had some kind of change of use is what we call that. And again, that goes into the new construction roll. So there's, I think it's much more complicated. I've processed it for like ten years, and I won't take you down in the, in the weeds. Urban renewal, as you're knowledgeable with, the Meridian downtown urban renewal has been around for a while. It's seen about a thirty percent increase on the increment side. Ten Mile, which has a lot of growth potential, starting to see some pretty good sized buildings out there, a forty-five percent increase. So I mean, the urban renewal districts will be pretty pleased with their added revenue that will be coming in from there. Overall tax burden, this one's always kind of fascinating. I don't have all the answers on this one of exactly why this, this happens. I have some answers, but probably not as much as you'd like to see. So as it's, the burden, the tax burden is shifting. So you can see residential was at sixty-five percent, and now they're increasing to sixty-eight percent. You know, at times, that can be a concern, and we always want to know, you know, what's happening here. And commercial is actually going down. I talked to our statistician, and one of the things, because of all the new residential homes are coming on, they're actually outpacing the commercial value. So when you look at it as far as just total dollars that are going out, they're growing at a faster rate than commercial. So I think that's a large percentage of it. Another might be the, and this more so in my opinion, is the homeowner's exemption is capped at two hundred thousand. And I know there's talks about getting this indexed and getting it moved up, because two hundred thousand within Ada County is not very much in compared to the rest of the state. So it'd be nice to have that increased, but that's capped at two hundred thousand, which keeps, so properties over two hundred thousand, you're paying dollar for dollar on top of the taxes, where the people under two hundred get the benefit. And I feel that plays a part into it additionally. And overall, I mean, that's it. You have all the, the numbers on the sheet. So if any of you have any questions, now is the time.
Thank you, Brad. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Brad, you talked a lot about kind of this unprecedented increases. And I'm just curious if you can recall the last time that we saw valuations go up at such, by such a high percentage? Something that's happened in your career? Is it something that is cyclical? Let me understand.
So I've been with Ada County since nineteen ninety-seven. So of course, I was, you know, saw the market go up and saw it come down. And we're always very fascinated, what, what are the criterias that make this happen? And, you know, I'm not very good at saying what happens in the future. But I will say that what I saw back then was kind of scary, you know, as far as the loans and what banks were doing and stuff. And when I look at the market today, we have a lot of people coming in, the ratio of people paying, you know, cash for properties. There's just a lot more security in the market today. And as long as we're the place to live and we're competitive in the northwest region as far as a very affordable place to live, even though it seems crazy expensive to people that have lived here a long time, to people coming outside, you've got to remember, these are great deals they're getting. And they're going to, and they're paying cash, and they're selling their homes for much higher prices and buying, you know, so they're not leveraged out to where they were before. So I mean, in my mind, we're in a much different market than we were years ago. But I know my opinion, that is strictly my opinion, and it differs from others I speak to, but I feel we're, I don't feel it's completely sustainable, and I don't really like these large increases, but I feel it's not, I don't see the downward trend that we saw before. I see it possibly leveling off at some point. But what are your thoughts about it?
It's all you, Luke.
Thank you. It's rare that we get asked a question. You know, from my perspective, I get concerned about, you know, we saw what happened in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, significant growth in the valley. Municipalities grew their building departments tremendously, and the market dropped out. And then cities had to make really hard decisions about employees to lay off. Meridian was in a really unique point at that juncture in that our model afforded us the ability to scale back without laying off people. We don't have that luxury anymore. And so when I continue to see growth, I, like many, am waiting for that bubble to pop and want us to remain conservative, because I don't want us as a council, I don't ever want to be in a position where we've got to lay somebody off because the market has dropped out. And so relying on experts like you about valuations demand where we're headed is so critical, I think, for me, when we go into our budget season, to have a good understanding about what the demands in our community are going to be so we make the best decision.
That's fair enough. And if nobody has, that was very good. If nobody has any other questions, I have one other statistic I'll throw out there for you that I just got this morning.
Ms. Mylum.
I do have a question regarding the homeowner's exemption. So what is the forecast on that? And what is, what is the process for having that increased? And, and what have you heard in the rumblings of?
So I did hear some rumblings on it a couple of weeks ago, and that it probably will not go anywhere the next couple of years. So the index would be nice, but I think it's probably going to be fixed for a couple more years. So is what I've heard, but I'm pretty, pretty low on that, on that level. But I know it did not gain any traction this season, so I think that's probably going to be what we're going to see in the future.
Mr. Burnt, did you have a question?
No, I mean, more, more or less a comment. It's truly amazing to see what happens in these, in these markets. I mean, we're all doing well, and most people are doing well, and it, see growth is controlled growth, smart growth is good. But it's during these good times that businesses go out of business, in my opinion, you know, where people struggle, because when they have money, they spend money. And, and it's almost like monopoly money to a certain degree. And so when things go bad, and times are tough, they don't have the type of resources to be able to withstand the downturn. And so I completely agree with Councilmember Cavanagh. You know, even though times are good, that's when we should be even more conservative in spending, or excuse me, saving even more, because it's not always going to be like this. And so in seeing these numbers almost prove that to a certain degree, because they're, they're pretty large. So I appreciate you taking the time to come and inform us on, on what's going on in the valley, especially our city of Meridian.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions from counsel? Brad, do you have one?
Yeah, just one final point. And our statistician gave this to me this morning, because Ada County as a whole puts on about, we have about thirteen residential properties occupied each day as a whole. And I was curious, since I was doing this presentation, how much, how many of those homes are attributed to Meridian? So he ran the numbers, and we're talking, I mean, you know, we got unincorporated one point three, Boise is two point four, Eagle, two point two, Garden City, point one, Kuna, one point six, Starr is point seven. So Meridian gets five point one. So as you can see in Ada County, I mean, you're double what any other city is putting on. So it's just a lot of growth out here. So I mean, everything just kind of reflects that. So it's growing.
Thanks for reminding us.
Yeah. Like I said, I don't, I don't live out here, but we, you know, we deal with.
I'm sorry.
Sure. Yeah.
You can always move.
Apparently, you need to get out more often.
I was just happy my car made it here, because I don't have an AC, and I had to drive out here. And so I was just happy to make it out here, so.
Well, we're happy you joined us, and thank you for the information. We appreciate it.
Thank you for taking the time to listen.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
We did have an item that we moved from the consent agenda, the Meridian Fire Department, the Compliance Engine contract change.
Madam Mayor and City Council, so what we have, what you have before you is a contract amendment with Bryser, who runs the Compliance Engine. Back in two thousand twelve, we signed on with, along with Boise Fire, to utilize the Compliance Engine, which is a third-party vendor, that the sprinkler companies, fire hood companies that do the hood suppression systems, the hood cleaning companies are required to report to the Compliance Engine when these inspections are completed. When we signed on in two thousand twelve, the fee amount that was being charged by Bryser was fifteen dollars. We utilize a phone part of the, the Compliance Engine to where Bryce will actually make phone calls to the people when they have deficiencies or their systems are past due being inspected. And so since that time, obviously since two thousand twelve, we have grown considerably. Just in the first, I pulled up the data while the previous gentleman was speaking, and in the last five months, we're averaging about a hundred and sixty inspections a month that are being uploaded into the Compliance Engine. The Compliance Engine itself has been a great help for us. Just in the last three months, we've found systems that, excuse me, had never been put in the system and/or had been inspected within five years. So we had some bad sprinkler systems out there. And we had one particular restaurant just up the street that their hood had never been cleaned, which, as we know, hood cleanings is very important to prevent fires. So what has happened in the valley is Eagle Fire, Kuna Fire, Middleton Fire, and Starr Fire Departments have all adopted the Compliance Engine at a thirty-dollar rate for their fee that the Compliance Engine is charging. And what they're doing with that fee, and also Boise Fire as well, and what they're doing with that fee is Bryser has a fee-sharing program that they have adopted and presented. They actually started it with Seattle Fire Department is where it came from. So part of that fee schedule is the fifteen dollars that Bryser normally collects, they would collect. There's a six and a half percent handling fee, basically, for them to run the program. And then whatever the balance is, they mail a check to the AHJ, the Authority Having Jurisdiction, which is the Meridian Fire Department, quarterly. So it's a fee-sharing program. So for Meridian Fire Department, if you average our hundred and sixty inspections that we're doing a month, that if we carried that through the year, that potential income would roughly be about twenty-six thousand dollars. So this is, I think Chief Niomar had sent an email to counsel, and this is kind of our first shot at cost recovery, is what it is. And it's partial cost recovery. It's not a full cost recovery, because if it was a full cost recovery, that fee would be pretty phenomenal, and I'm sure the restaurants would not want to pay that fee. So this is just a partial cost recovery. And then also, I've mentioned before that, and when I took over as the Fire Marshal, part of my goal is to keep things even in the, in the valley. Because when I took over, a lot of the complaints I was hearing was, well, I don't have to do that in Eagle, I don't have to do that in Boise, I don't have to do that here. So as all the other departments around us have adopted that thirty-dollar fee for our partial cost recovery and to keep things even in the valley, I've brought this contract amendment to you to have the same fee throughout the valley. Boise Fire just went to City Council two months ago and got their approval. We were shooting for a June fifteenth date if I was to get approval from our council to begin this program here in Meridian.
Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Joe, is it the, is it the thirty dollars plus the six point eight percent, or is it thirty dollars minus fifteen to Bryser, and then minus that six and a half percent?
Correct, yeah. So that's what I said, roughly, we'd be getting like fourteen dollars or, and some change. some change.
Thank you, Joe. So Madam Mayor, I had requested that we had, for us to pull this off. I don't know if we all had the chance to see the memo that they got sent out yesterday morning. I really applaud and appreciate what the department is trying to do and create some uniformity when it comes to fees. But, you know, we don't, we don't charge a lot of fees in the Fire Department, and I think that's a conversation for a later point in time about if we should have permit fees or not have permit fees. But with this being the first kind of step in that direction, I want to make sure that we're on board with either, again, a full cost recovery, a middle cost recovery, no cost recovery, and being able to really demonstrate to our customers what those dollars are paying for. I think that when other departments come to us with a fee increase, they've got a methodology or a rationale behind that specific dollar amount. And in many cases, again, it could be that we would actually need to charge less, it may be that we actually may want to charge more. I struggle with supporting a fee increase that the decision behind that amount is solely because this is what the other area municipalities are doing. So I know, I think we've got some folks from finance in there. I don't know if they want to speak to kind of how we do other fees, and if this is consistent. Where, I only got this yesterday morning, I didn't have a whole lot of time to dive into it that I would like. And so I'm not opposed to us looking at an increase in a fee for the Compliance Engine. I just want to make sure that, at least for myself, that I understand the rationale behind the specific dollar amount.
So Madam Mayor and Councilmember Cavanagh, that, part of that, the rationale behind that is to, because right now I am managing the Compliance Engine. Boise Fire, obviously, they do, and I'm going to refer to them quite a bit, because they do 9,000 inspections. And so they're, they actually, they're taking that fee, and they hired somebody. So they're able to cover the cost of an FTE to manage the whole Compliance Engine program. And that person is going to manage the deficiencies, making phone calls, following up and everything to make sure it's done. So right now, I am doing that. I roughly spend about eight hours a week managing the Compliance Engine. In 2021, I have a new inspector in the program, hopefully, to be brought on board. And part of that, I'm going to put it on them, because obviously with the growth that we've been all sitting in, I've been very busy. And so it makes more sense to use that funding to help that other, to help pay for that inspector that we have coming on board.
Madam Mayor, maybe for Councilmember, Chief and I had about six and a half minutes to talk about this before the meeting today. And again, I think it's incredibly appropriate if the cost to the department from operating this program should be covered by the fees. I think the big question is, does this $14 per permit cover that? Does it cover it at 20% of the chief's time, 100% of the chief's time? We just don't know. And so I guess I would look for our finance department as kind of subject matter experts to give us some direction about if this is appropriate, if there's, I just want to make sure that we can justify our decision, more than just this is what the other municipalities in the area are charging.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Milam?
So Joe, not to put you on the spot here, but you said, you kind of were vague about the amount. To Luke's point, if we were to do this as a total recovery model, do you have a number?
Well, at 26,000, yeah, the fee would be like $100 if we did a full cost recovery. And that's, that's a lot of money for a restaurant to put up every six months, have their hood inspected. And then on top of that, they have to have their fire sprinklers inspected. So it would be, be a big hit to our, the restaurants and stuff that are, and the commercial businesses that are being inspected, including the city of Meridian.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh?
If council wants to move forward, that's fine. But I guess maybe a recommend, excuse me, a recommendation would be is to maybe continue this or table it for two weeks. Allow finance to work with fire to come up with some recommendations for us as a body to look at. Again, whether it's, again, a full cost recovery, a partial cost. And it very well could be that in order to do a full cost recovery, we need to charge X amount. But we as a body could say, well, we want to charge less and offset those costs. I think just being able to be confident in the decision we make is important, at least to me. And again, I don't know, I see Keith here. I thought I saw Todd. I don't know if they're, he's hiding. If there's any information that you want to share, I don't know, I know you've had an opportunity to hear about this a little bit. If there's any other feedback you can provide to us before we make a decision, it'd be appreciated.
And while he was walking up, Madam Mayor and City Council. And just so you know, the Fire Department, we don't typically charge fees for anything. We have one fee that we charge for, and that's for home daycare inspections. And that's $25, and that's set by the state. So that one particular fee, we don't, we don't have any control over. That's just the one fee that we do charge for. Obviously, there are other things out there that we can charge fees for. I have a whole section of 100 of the Idaho Fire Code that allows for permits. And so part of the problem with charging fees for that is you have to be able to manage it. And I don't think myself and the two inspectors that I have, I would need a whole nother FTE to cover managing all those permits and the fees and everything else that go along with it. Obviously, the larger fire departments, like our neighbors to the east, they have the FTEs to do that. And so they charge for demolition fees, you know, hot work fees, all that stuff, so.
Madam Mayor, Ms. Cavanagh, the question I was informed about is what is my recommendation on the concern of this particular consent agenda item and the fee? Does that summarize the question I had?
Was this the question, but that, I think, is great feedback to provide to the council.
Yeah. Ms. Cavanagh, the opinion of the finance department is we believe that any fee that the city is going to collect money on, regardless of its origination, should be reviewed by some department, i.e. the finance department, or even the Fire Department with the analysis, before we charge and collect any revenue on behalf of the city, or even on behalf of a third party. That is our opinion of how fees should be managed within the finance department. So hopefully that answered your question?
It does. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Neri, wouldn't any kind of fee need a public hearing?
So Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm looking at the contract. We already have a contract with this company. They essentially are our third-party vendor to do the inspection. So they have charged the fee. It's not our fee. They remit a portion of that fee back to us for the support that we provide to them to go do the work for us. It's similar to be more in scope of how we direct people to backflow inspections. We don't charge the fee. They charge the fees. They do the work. They do the inspections. Here, they're remitting a portion of the fee back to us in relation to the work that the chief does, the chief adjutor does. So it's kind of a mix between, it's not really a typical city fee. We're not performing this function completely. We're performing a portion of the function that we're getting this back from this third-party vendor. So this is already an existing contract. This is just an addendum to the contract to change the cost recovery of what they charge the other people. I think what the chief's saying, and what Councilmember Cavanagh's saying is, we're trying, wanting to true up, is this even an accurate reflection of the work that's being provided, and do we want to agree? I think there are just, from what I've heard from the chief, they're just trying to be consistent so that you get an inspection in Star, and it's $10. You get inspection in Middleton, it's $30. You get inspection in Meridian, it's $100. So I think they're just trying to true up the fees and saying their $15 recovery meets the needs of this company to perform this service for us. And that's why they're remitting us the difference for our work. So I don't disagree. We can certainly have that conversation. But this is already an existing contract, and these fees have already been charged by the company, not by the city. So that's kind of why it hasn't gone through the, what you would have, are thinking of as that normal public hearing, the process where we change fees, because this isn't a fee we're charging. It's a fee somebody else charges.
Right. And this just caught me flat-footed. The chief and I haven't talked about it. And so, and since I wasn't here on Friday, I didn't have a chance to get more detail. I think it would be appropriate to put this, next week's agenda, what this, is next week the long one?
Madam Mayor, you have two public hearings and another presentation, and some final plats that may or may not move to consent.
Yeah, I would just say, let's bring this back next week.
Okay.
And ask the chief and I can talk about it.
Sounds great. And also, Madam Mayor, just in council, to tag on what Mr. Neri stated, we did have an open house with our vendors to let them know about it. And then two weeks later, we did, we presented to the Idaho Fire Protection Forum, which is all the sprinkler companies and all those in the valley. We meet monthly at the Hampton Inn. And we did a presentation to them as well. And at that presentation, we did talk about the fee schedule. And Chief Gervais and I got together after, because we got a lot of good feedback at that meeting. And we actually combined a bunch of the required upload reports, and we combined some, and we deleted some to lessen the impact that was going to be hitting the restaurant owners at the end of it. And at that meeting, we did learn that when we implemented that $15 fee, a lot of, some of the companies actually didn't even pass that cost on to their, they just ate it. So, and then we also sent a letter to BOMA, Building Maintenance People, and we did not receive any feedback from them. So we did, hey, say, hey, you know, we're going to do this. And we did have the one good meeting where we got a lot of feedback, so.
Well, Joe, that's good information. So if we can get that information out to council prior to next week, just detailing the different steps that have been made, what the actual amendment is, what we were doing before, how it's different under this new amended agreement that is desired, and then we can have probably a more informed discussion.
Perfect. That actually was on the memo that got accidentally deleted off the Novus. So it, all that information is on the memo that I sent along with this. So if you read the memo and flip it over, there's more on the back. And that's the part that talks about the meetings we had. So you have that information.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh?
So next week, when we can bring this back, is that an appropriate time for finance to come back with the fee analysis then as well? Is that going to be part of what we're, while we're also continuing it?
I don't know. I will talk with Todd as well. This is not typical, as Mr. Neri pointed out, to the fee structure and the process that we have in place for that, but certainly under contract evaluations, what differences that is, and the data that substantiates the changes. I'll have a conversation with him.
Thank you.
Okay, we will just put this over till next week. We'll move to item 9A under our Parks and Recreation Department, our annual department update.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, it is my pleasure to come before you for this annual strategic update. And I look forward to sharing with you some of the accomplishments of this great team that I have behind me, and share with you some of the things that have been going on. In the interest of time, I'm going to go quickly through the beginning part, which is more focused on mission, vision, values, and staffing. But I don't want to just skip it, because it is the basis for everything that we choose to do. So with our mission, we really, really think about and strive to enhance the quality of life for the citizens of Meridian. We do that through, you know, through parks, through programs, through pathways, through a variety of different things that we'll be talking about today. The key phrase in our vision, that family-focused opportunities drives a lot of our decisions. We found that a community that's friendly for families is really friendly for everyone. Seniors love it, kids love it, and everyone in between seems to love it. Our focus areas, quality, community, and fun, are those areas that have kind of become our mantra and are on our wall. So we want to talk a little bit about who we are and the structure of our department. One of, there's a story here that I think's worth telling. You can see that blank photo on the left with a TBD. We have been planning and seeing the need for an administrative division manager for a number of years. It was in our comprehensive financial plan to come before you with this year's budget process. The good news is, we have seen savings, time savings and things from the software that we implemented last year, that have been driving more people to our website, like we hoped it would, and we talked to you about. And so we are constantly evaluating the need, and we're not going to ask, just because it was in the plan, we think this can wait a year. We'll, so we bumped it out, and we'll evaluate it again next year, whether it's time. But this year, we think that that position can wait. So we've got me as the director, a marketing coordinator, three admin assistants. Our recreation division is led by Colin Moss. He's our recreation manager. And you can see the breakdown under him. I'm going to go fairly quickly through these. Garrett White oversees our home court division. And Garrett oversees all of our activities over there, as well as the project that's going on that we'll talk about. Our parks division is overseen by Mike Barton, our park superintendent. And we'll talk about some of the activities that they've been up to, including our foreman, our arborist, our project manager. The foreman's right here, Roger Norberg. He oversees the park shop and the, all the maintenance activities that happen over there. And we're divided out there with an assistant foreman, two crew chiefs, and our maintenance techs, and many seasonal groundskeepers that help us through the summer. I want to point out the incredibly important role that our Parks and Recreation Commission does for us. This picture was taken just last month at our annual pathways tour. We were blessed with some good weather in between several days of really bad weather, so we hit it just right. We went and rode some of the new pathways through town. But we're blessed to have a great and engaged Parks and Recreation Commission that helps us vet the questions and the projects and the challenges that we work on a day-to-day basis.
Shout out to the Godfather.
Our facilities, of course, everyone knows the building we're in, City Hall. Not everyone realizes that the plaza is considered a city park, and one that we manage and maintain. Our maintenance shop's over on Lenarc off of Locust Grove. We also have the community center that's on Idaho in downtown, as well as the home court on Taylor Avenue off Franklin Road. A lot of what we do is in these, the aspect of parks, plazas, and open spaces, as well as pathways. And what we want to do right now is get into some of our numbers. I know that this commission loves to dive into the numbers sometimes. And we want to share some of those with you, because they are exciting. So our, the star by the three regional parks is because I'm including in here our, the soon-to-be-open Discovery Park Phase 1. I want to announce to you today that we, the weather's been good enough over the last month, that we are ready to pick a date for the grand opening. That grand opening will be planned for July 26th. It's a Friday, 11:00 a.m. We hope you can save the date, if you can, and be there for ribbon cutting. And we'll talk more about this a little later. But the next day, on Saturday, we'll hold a public party in the park for the community for a few hours, and invite everyone out there. But we have six community parks, nine neighborhood parks, four special-use parks, two sports parks. The total of that number is 24. The top three are really, the top three lines, which would come to 18, are the parks that everyone truly thinks of as traditional parks with... that everyone truly thinks of as traditional parks with playgrounds and things like that. So, whenever I'm asked, how many parks do we have? I usually ask back, well, how do you want me to count them? Because the number can be 18, the number can be 24, depending on what you want to include. But there they are, broken out. We have 300, we just passed the 300-acre mark this year for total developed parkland. 334 acres, that number does include Phase 1 of Discovery Park. We own 97 acres of undeveloped parkland. That includes the remainder of Discovery Park, as well as what we call West Meridian Regional Park now, or the Borat property out Cherry Lane and McDermott. The, the future acreage of Margaret Aldapi Park is not included in there because we don't own it yet, but we are in conversations about that. The pathway number was very different on Friday, and it was lower. It was, you know, we, it, it needed a better analysis. And I'm like, I am not convinced that the number we had was right. And that's good, I, we dug a little deeper and got Brian McClure, bless his heart, in planning, helped us out to dig into the GIS data and help us understand what all has been developed out there by all these new developments and adding pathways that we don't necessarily maintain, but are part of our system. And what we came up with was that we now have about 14 miles maintained by MP, Meridian Parks and Rec, that bottom number, but about 40 miles out there of, of parts of the pathway system that have come together. That is about double the numbers that we have been reporting to you in the past. So, we have seen some significant movement and growth in our, in our pathways recently, thanks to all the development that's going on. Our focus internally is on those priorities of Five Mile Creek Pathway, the 10 Mile Creek Pathway, and the Railwood Trail. Those are the ones you're probably most familiar with. Of course, there are other segments across the city that are being developed, as you see on the, the rest of the spaghetti map. But the green line, the purple line, and the blue line are, are, are those three. So, our pathways are increasing. You can see up over 80,000. And I think those numbers there probably need to be refreshed based on the data that we just got updated. But some of those numbers are, are new and exciting to us. Let's talk about urban forestry. I think this one deserves a little attention. We've been a Tree City ESA for now 17 years. We, Elroy, I don't think, is Elroy here today? Oh, he is in the back there. Elroy's our arborist, has overseen a lot of growth. You can see the number on the bottom. We now maintain over 5,000 trees in our, in, in our public tree system. There are way many more trees than that in Meridian. But he's overseen our downtown tree box program, which I'm going to give a little more detail here in just a second. Our Arbor Day celebration went excellent this year. And the mayor, Genesis, and I just got a chance to see some of the cars that the kids made and sent over. And they're, they're just sweet and special if everybody wants to see them, but they're a lot of fun. And of course, tracking down that, that annual tree for our Christmas tree lighting ceremony. Let's talk for just a moment about the, the numbers of the trees. So, I mentioned over 5,000 trees now. If you just go back 10 years, our number was 1,690. That's, that was the number of public trees. So, in 10 years, that's how much growth we've seen in the number of trees that our arborist takes care of. We are going to be asking for, just foreshadowing, just some additional seasonal labor for forestry. So, that's one thing that we need with the, the growth. But one of the things that, the thing that I want to focus on, and maybe a special kudo that I want to throw towards Elroy this year, the downtown tree boxes has been an ongoing priority for us. We've been in partnership with MDC. There were 96 original tree boxes out there that we were saying, let's get the old tree boxes replaced to the, the new style, a little bit bigger, better for the roots. Today, 84 of them have been replaced. Two have been removed that were just determined they were in the wrong spot or good reasons for them to go away. Eight are still out there that have been rehabbed and determined, we, they're not a priority today. We don't want to replace them today. The trees in them are still good. They're not cracking the sidewalks. They do still, at some point, need to be replaced, but we don't think that time is today. So, they're in a, a holding pattern. Wait and see. Replace them when the time is right. Let's not rip out a good tree in a good spot just because the, you know, just because it's got the old style. At some point, it will. And then, there are two around the old McFadden property that we think will be redone. They're still the old style, so there's 10 there, that we think future development will, will rehab. Over that time, over the last 10 years or so, there's also been 49 new tree boxes added by development, by City Hall, by Farmers and Merchants Bank, by Compass, to name a few. That's where those 49 come from. But they're in the new style. So, there's now 145 out there. And this program has been, been going very well for us, but we think that, you know, the, the annual replacement cycle is going to pause. And we will treat this in the future like a detailed fixed cost and replace what needs to be replaced that year. So, thank you, Elroy.
Good job, Elroy. Hey, Steve, on your changes for the last 10 years, how many trees were in Kleiner Park?
About 1,200 in that park alone. Yeah. "Trees, Trees, Trees" was the mantra of Gene Kleiner, the first meeting I ever had with him. And he wanted a lot of trees and, and we planted a bunch out there. I meant, we were out in Kleiner Park at about 1:00 today, and I went over and watched the little video kiosk for, you know, showing someone the, the video of, of Gene Kleiner talking about his vision for the park and "Trees, Trees, Trees." And one thing I noticed in that park, it's only been, it hasn't even been 10 years yet, but the trees have grown a lot over that time. And looking at the little sticks that were in the video compared to what's out there today was, was pretty impressive. Next, I want to talk about classes, camps, and excursions. Jake Garo has a lot to do with, with this aspect of our department and our activity guides that come out three times a year, December, April, and August. The April one, you know, came out a month ago. There, we had a special day with the opening day of registrations for summer classes. I think I have that in the top right corner. The first opening day of registrations, we took in $26,000 of registrations for summer classes. Last year, that number was $6,000. The year before that, it was 2. Part of that belongs to the credit of the new software. People are engaging with the software more and able to get online and register upfront. Part of it was, remember, if you registered online with the old system, you'd have a fee at the end. That, that fee went away with the new software. It's friendlier to the citizen and people are noticing. So, I wanted to share that with you. We continue to see a general upward trend, except for 2015, which was a spike. I'm not sure why that was such its own little spike, but if you take that one year out, you can just kind of see the general up, upward trend. And we are on track to have a similar result this year. Sports leagues. You know, we, we, we have a lot of partners in the community that, that help us with our, our youth sports, you know, the PALS and I-9 and I'm gonna, you know, as soon as I start naming them, my mind goes blank with everyone that should be mentioned. MYB, others that, that help with the youth sports. They partner with us. As a department, we, because the needs not met for the adult sports, that's where we put our internal focus. And we, we partner with these other groups through field reservations for the, the youth sports. But we have basketball, softball, both regular and slow pitch, flag football, volleyball, and now an ultimate frisbee tournament that has been run. You can see the, the trend. Each different color represents a different sport, and each line is, is a year, so you can see the trend over the years. We're kind of topping off as we, you know, we kind of reach the capacity of our space. But the, the community's growing, the programs are growing, and you can see we're, we're on track this year, just slightly ahead of last year, as we would expect to be. Tyler, thank you. I know I'm going to forget to say names of people behind me, so I apologize in advance if I do. Special events. Tyler said he'd give me five bucks if I said that Renee put the special in our special events again, so there you go.
Don't spend money.
These are the events that, that we focus on. Renee does just a phenomenal job. Unplug and Be Outside Week was just this, this past week, and it was bigger and better than ever. We were blessed with a really great weather week, a great kickoff in, in Kleiner Park. Cable and Movie Nights start the first weekend in June. I did provide to you the movie night schedule. We have a great lineup of movies this year. They are every week, every Friday night, June, July, and August. That school is out, so it doesn't go to the very end of August this year, but it's based on the school calendar because, and the availability of our officers to be there and help with crowd control. But, so, the movie night schedule is there in front of you. I'm not going to go through the whole list because I got some of these at the end with dates to, to remember. So, just know that our events are strong. And in my opinion, in our mantra of quality, community, and fun, nothing does more of what we do to build community than these. These bring out people by thousands and is, is something that's very rewarding to see how beloved they have become in our community.
Well, alls I can remember is, is Cable One Movie Night. And when we got that started, that was, it's exciting to see that it's still a very popular event, and it's something that, that people look forward to. Good job, Colin.
Yeah. It's been a great program that was started and has been running. I think last year was the year we hit our 100th movie. Is that right? Was it already a couple of years ago? Oh, man. Time flies.
Time flies.
Time flies. All right. Barb, as you know, is our volunteer coordinator, and we love our volunteers. Our volunteers do a lot for us, and those volunteers come in many forms, from the, the faces that you see on a regular basis at the front desk, to our Park Ambassador Program, City Hall Tour Guides, which are going on right now. We have a lot of just churches and groups, businesses that reach out and want to do service projects. We will do everything we can to find them a meaningful thing to do. It helps us, helps them. And we've been blessed to have a lot of Eagle Scout projects lately, and we, we love our, our scouts and our scout projects. Here's some numbers. You can see that by the numbers, they are saving us about $200,000 in, in labor costs if we were to just pay for the, the time that they do internally. So, we love and appreciate our volunteers very much, and the, the number of hours, you know, is over 9,000 hours a year right now that we're, that we're able to take advantage of. So, thank them. I have a quick slide here. I'm probably not going to do it justice, but I did provide you a copy of the, the actual, very brief study this comes from. It's not the full study, it's just numbers. Let me back up. So, the National Recreation and Parks Association did a national study of the economic impact of Parks and Recreation in the nation. Well, they realized when they had done, been done building this entire database, that they could stratify it regionally. You know, they didn't do, we didn't have to just plug numbers into a national database. They, they said, hey, we can look at just the Treasure Valley. And if any departments are interested in knowing what their economic impact is for their community in terms of dollars and jobs, you know, send us your, your numbers for, for operating budgets and capital project budgets, and, and we can help you with that. So, it, based on what we did last year alone, and they're telling me this is a conservative number, that we generated about $18.6 million in economic activity for our community and supported 181 jobs. Now, if you have specific questions, I'm probably not going to be able to answer it, but there is a link to the study in the, the paper I gave you. And if you have questions, I can try and get the answers for you. But I, it was a fun number to get, and I just wanted to, to share it with you. And before I go too far saying that this is special and specific to just Parks and Rec, I, I want, having talked to Todd, I want to acknowledge that, you know, the, the spending that happens in other departments has a similar impact. It's just that we've been able to quantify it because we had the opportunity. So, here's where I really want to share and focus, is some of the accomplishments that have happened over the last year. The park-wide ADA repairs that were required are completed ahead of schedule. We are very grateful that we are where we are. It's been re-inspected, it's been signed off, that sign-off has been provided to legal, and we are moving on. So, we have the project with the Fix-It Bike Repair Stations that was MIAC-driven and participatory budget. Last year, most, if not all of you were there, at our Hillsdale Park and the Hill Partnership Dedication on May 25th, we lovingly called it the Marty Party. He brought in the band, Southwest Surfers, and we had a great day out there. The Kleiner Park Fishing Dock was recently approved by Council. You can see a photo of it there on the left, and it is in place. We will be having an actual dedication ceremony at the end of this month, on the 30th. There's still some landscaping repairs and sod being put in and things like that, but here in just a couple of weeks, we will formally open it, although it is in place and safe to use now, and I saw someone on it using it today. So, we opened a third summer campsite at Discovery Elementary, a second site up north. Filled, and one of the things we were worried about was, were we just going to pull away from our existing one? The answer to that was, no, we actually filled both sites, and we are poised and ready to talk about opening a fourth site for next year, not this summer, but. We assumed the operations of Fuller Park. We did a repair, a pretty significant repair job on the, on the Blackstone Pathway, which is the one near Fuller Park. The Lamp Larkwood Pathway, which is along McMillan between Meridian Road and Locust Grove, was last year done and put in gravel, but we had to hold off for the irrigation district to complete some repairs. They asked us not to pave it until they got their equipment on it. And that's been paved now, and that's the photo of it on the, the top left. So, that project is done. The Linder Road Sidewalk Connection and that pathway riding near, widening near Tulley Park was done last, last summer. The Home Court Improvements are underway. You guys recently approved the contract. Demolition started last Monday and is going in earnest. I believe yesterday was the day they started tearing into the restrooms. Is that correct? So, we, we, we had to wait until this weekend, this last weekend, because of a large annual tournament that happens in there that needed the restroom facilities. So, yesterday, so literally, this is just very freshly underway, but we are moving forward with the, the Home Court Improvements. Pike Avenue Landscaping was a partnership project with, with ACHD and the Planning Department. And then the Banshell Shade, you can see a photo there on the bottom left. It was just completed in the last couple of weeks, and it is in place and I think looks great. We will have the symphony under it this, for Gene Kleiner Day here in a few weeks, on the second Saturday in June. Uh, we will have the symphony under it this, uh, for Gene Kleiner Day here in a few weeks on the second Saturday in June. And, uh, very pleased with how that project turned out. Let's talk about Discovery Park. That's, that's the big 800-pound elephant of projects for us right now. Large playground with the water logs, sand and water play, the roller slides, the nine-foot Idaho-themed climbing map that's kind of really got a lot of buzz and attention, um, the zip lines, uh, the playgrounds for both the older kids and the younger kids, the splash pad, um, the also, uh, and these were some of the amendments that you, uh, approved for us, uh, last year. Uh, instead of just one picnic shelter, it's now three. We've got our two eliminated softball fields. We got our, our shaded raised stage, the restroom and concessions building, parking for about 280 vehicles, which it's not going to be enough on day one and, uh, for the Christmas and Easter at church version, but will support the general uses there. But we're already looking forward to phase two and expanding that, uh, that parking with the next phase. We do have an off-leash dog area. We've learned from our current dog park that Meridian residents love their dogs. And I will bet that acre for acre, that dog park is probably our most heavily used park space that we have today. It'll have walking paths, three interpretive gardens, pollinator garden firewise and low water use, an open play area for events and, uh, our maintenance shop and then the signage, which also, uh, we think functions as art. Now, uh, we have been putting together a time lapse video for you and Rachel, if you will, bring that up for us. Click on that and fill the screen. I'll talk over it just a little bit, um, just to let you know what you're looking at. The pole was set up near the playground area. This is looking to the southwest and where the, that wall is part of the playground, that, uh, it's kind of square wall is where the climbing rock will be. And then the area on the right is the sand and water play where you see the, and you see the snow and then melt and then snow and then melt over this last winter. Um, now we're looking from the same pole towards the, yeah, the nor, sorry, the southeast. This is toward the splash pad. The concessions building is going up right there. There's the concessions building. And then in the distance, the ball fields and you can see the lights from the, uh, from, on those ball fields. We were able to get those ball fields seeded last year, um, so that grass is coming in well, as you can see as the drone shot goes up. Uh, that's the sand and water play. Uh, there's the playground area zooming around. That's the zip line. You can see the dog park area in the background there. You can see the grass on the ball fields coming in well. And we hope the rest of the park will get seeded soon. You know, we need 10 to 12 weeks to get that established enough to, uh, uh, get, oh, start hosting events and, uh, activities on it. But we're excited to see it coming together so well. I want to give Mike Barton some, some props as our project manager out there for overseeing that and several of our construction projects and, uh, taking that forward successfully. So. Uh, with that, I want to transition from some of the accomplishments to what we see on the horizon. I mentioned that we are thinking about a fourth summer campsite at Ponderose Elementary. We have reached out. They have agreed with that as a, a possibility. We already have it in our agreement with the school district that that can happen. The Champion and Renaissance Park Art is a partnership with the Arts Commission and you can see the concept plans over on the right-hand side for what that art, uh, is planned to look like. And that's supposed to be under construction this year and installed either late this fall, or I think some of them are even early next spring. We've talked a little bit already about Home Court Bay Five and the restrooms and the renovations that are going on there. The ownership of, of Fuller Park. So we've taken on the maintenance of Fuller Park already, as you know. We plan to take over ownership this October. When we do that rededication, um, rebranding with, with a new sign that says City of Meridian instead of Western Nada Rec District, um, we would also like to have an official dedication of what's already been announced, uh, by the mayor as the, the Charlie Roundtree, uh, ball field. And we have an item coming up after, after this to talk about putting some new fencing up, uh, around that, that field. Um, other things on the horizon, uh, Five Mile Creek Pathway, Segment D is the segment near the wastewater treatment plant from 10 Mile to Black Cat. Uh, we have been meeting with, with, uh, Public Works and talking about their plans and how do we get, uh, our pathways through and connected? It now kind of goes up to that point and stops. The Oaks Ha, Project has al, has built some new pathway, actually between, along the same creek from between Black Cat and McDermott. So, um, we have more that we can connect to if we can get there. We're also excited. We already talked to you last year about the trailhead near Reed Husky Park and, uh, with the 10 Mile Road Widening Project. That's one that we, um, look forward to, to seeing and, uh, we've already come forward with the, uh, cost share with the, with the, uh, with ACHD, sorry, that's what I was looking for, and that project will be moving forward. We recently got, uh, so Fuller Park was not part of our ADA repairs originally. We took it on. Uh, we, we talked about this when we took it on, that we knew that there were ADA issues out there. We, uh, have, uh, the money for that in our budget that was, was granted and being covered by the, uh, the, the funds that were passed on from Western Nada Rec District. And so that study has recently been completed and we are underway. You, the, the picture kind of in the center is some of those, uh, uh, projects near the restroom. And we are, um, uh, moving forward out there. Uh, the Pine Avenue pedestrian rest area is one that we've been, um, excited about. The concept plans in the top right there. Uh, this is kind of where the, the pathway system crosses pine. And we've talked about having a rest area, bike repair station, benches, things like that out there. We're moving forward with our planning for that. And then this Heroes Park parking expansion design is a recent conversation. I just wanted to put on your radar with a conversation with Powell with the 10 Mile Road Widening Project. We know all that parking that has been happening along 10 Mile is going away. And, uh, how do we start accommodating some possible expanded needs? And we are talking about with them about, uh, possible cost share and, um, how do we accomplish that? So more to come on that, but something that wanted to get on your radar that we are looking into. Our next section is just a quick update. You had a, a, a specific update on the strategic plan, uh, from the mayor's office just a month or two ago. But we just wanted to quick check in and, and give you, um, a, a quick update on where we are. So Objective 5A2, which was Discovery Park Phase One Design and Bidding, that part's completed. It also talked about public sports facilities and we had talked at the time about, uh, getting Home Court was, was part of that. And that one has been checked off and deemed accomplished. Excuse me. Objective 5A4, um, is one that was about fostering the development of Discovery Parks. At the time it was written, it was specifically about Discovery Park, but with the completion of that, the council and the mayor asked us to, to adapt that and change it to, to adding Discovery elements to all of our existing and future parks. So the Heroes Park project from last year was part of that. Uh, the projects for this year that are going to be going into Renaissance and Champion are part of that. And what we want, uh, this one is still underway, but we want to look at our existing neighborhood parks and their themes and identities and how, make a plan, um, for how they can be reinforced in the future. Um, and 5B4 was recently completed, um, and that was given in our update, uh, to council already from the mayor's office. But, uh, um, this was the one where we looked at all of our existing recreation programs, identified gaps and, and what do we need to, to focus on, uh, moving forward. Just a quick look at the, what we see coming. I don't think I'm going to read every bullet for you, but you do have a copy of this presentation. We just wanted to take a look at what's in our comprehensive final, uh, comprehensive financial plan, looking ahead. We're already looking at, you know, we have an open phase one yet of Discovery Park. We're already thinking about what do we need to do to start biting off, uh, phase two. A rec coordinator for adult sports for the growth that we've seen there. It's, it's doubled since we created that position and more are coming with the facilities that are being added. Um, so I think I'm just going to move on from there. You have a copy of this one because I, I, so you have a, and this was what the mayor was referring to at the beginning. So if anyone was wondering what the mayor was referring to that, hey, I just got this at the beginning of the meeting. Don't have time to go through it all here. Here it is. So, uh, dates you might want to know. Today, earlier today, uh, there was a check presentation from Blue Cross to the library, um, for a story trail. And they want to provide that story trail in Kleiner Park around the South Pond near the senior center. It's intended for, uh, for seniors, uh, uh, to be able to walk with their grandkids and read them a story and, 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 uh, one of the coolest things to me, Mayor, and you were there, was that this was selected not just by the Blue Cross Foundation, but the Blue Cross employees actually donated these funds and selected the project. So that was, that was kind of fun to see and we're excited to partner with them to see if we can bring that project to Kleiner Park. A week from today, um, in Kleiner Park, there will also be an Idaho Power Check presentation where they have agreed to fund the batteries that we needed to get the, the Park Ambassador egg, I mean, the vehicle that they drive, um, back up and functioning. The, the batteries were old and worn out and had a great long life, longer than they ever were intended to, I understand. But, uh, they've been very gracious in saying that they will, um, uh, cover the, the costs of those batteries. Um, and kudos to Barb for, for reaching out and, and coordinating that. Memorial Day Ceremony is at the Rock of Honor. Uh, that's an annual one and, and many of you come to that every year. So I wanted to make sure you knew that that is going to happen on Memorial Day, May 27th at 11:00 AM. And then like I already mentioned, the fishing dock dedication will happen later that week on the 30th at the Kleiner Park dock. Um, in June, the Cable One Movie Nights start, uh, and then Gene Kleiner Day, here's the date. So June 8th, we will have the Meridian Symphony in the Banshell under the new canopy and have a concert and really look forward to that. Uh, Plane in the Plaza is a concert series that will be right out in front of City Hall. This is kind of the new reincarnation of the Kleiner Park, uh, concert series that we have had. There was a desire to move it downtown and try something new, kind of in the Alive After Five sort of vein. And, uh, so from June 13th through the end of July, every Thursday, 5:00 PM at the end of the workday, uh, there will be, uh, a concert series in the plaza out front. The one exception to what that date range I just said is the 4th of July is a Thursday and that will have its own event in Story Park and fireworks, which is my next item. So, um, and then the Discovery Park Grand Opening, the two dates are there, July 26th and 27th. So we hope to look forward to joining us for that. With that, you can keep up with all the action with us online. Shelley is great at updating our website and, and putting things out, keeping our website updated. So we hope you'll, uh, follow some of the exciting activities. With that, let me once again just turn around and say, this is the team behind me that makes all these things, uh, possible and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Steve, and thank you to your team. Counsel, any questions? Mr. Cavanagh.
I echo the mayor's comments. Great presentation, very thorough. I did have a couple of questions that popped up and that I'm hoping you can provide some clarification on. Uh, one, I'm really excited to hear about the gardens that are happening at Discovery. That was something that wasn't on my, my radar. Who's going to maintain that? Is that going to be an operation of the Parks Department? Is it hopes to have a volunteer organization like the Community Garden at Kleiner? What's the vision of that particular piece?
So those gardens will be maintained by park staff. Um, I suppose we're open to volunteers. I'm going to look, turn around and look at Mike, but we're always open if there's groups that want to help us take those on. But right now, the plan and current vision is that they will be maintained as part of the park.
Great. Madam Mayor, follow up again. Steve, I, I love our tree box program. I think it creates, um, a really unique sense of place for downtown, um, just for our community in general. I often though wonder about, I mean, it's an ongoing cost liability to the city. And I don't know if you and your team have ever thought, is there, is there another way that we can kind of capture that same charm with something that is a little more of a permanent fixture? And, and I don't know what that is, but I guess I'm just more planning.
Fake trees?
Planning to seed and, and I don't know if it's fake trees. I don't know what it is. I don't think it's fake trees. But, you know, I, I guess I, I would challenge your, your team who are amazing that if those options present themselves, that's something that I'm, I'm interested in. Um, and it's something that I think could have some significant cost savings. Now, there's things that are worthy of investment and, uh, creating the sense of place in our downtown community, I believe is worthy of the investment. But if there are other ways that we can reduce some of that cost long-term, it's something I also would be really supportive of.
And to your point, what probably warrants looking into is do we have the extents right? You know, make sure we're not going further and wider, you know, what, what is the right extents for that, uh, that true heart of the community where we want to make that investment? But, yeah.
Couple other comments if I can, Madam Mayor. Uh, just for council, I, I got to bug Steve the other day. I had the chance to go see the dock and the shade structure is unplugged and be outside. And I just want to echo what Steve said, the, the shade structure looks like it was built on day one. I mean, it really looks like it's a strong fixture within the park. Uh, I encourage you to go out and check it out. And when I was out there, people were already out using the fishing dock. So I think it's going to be, uh, really, really popular. Uh, just want to thank you, you know, you and your department always seems to elevate, um, everything you do. And when you look at those maps and those charts, you see elevation in our classes, right, elevation in our recreation events, elevation in our volunteer engagement. Um, I just think it's a true testament to you and your, uh, amazing staff who I always, I hear from a lot, you know, we hear this a lot, uh, from people who engage our emergency responders. Sometimes it's, it's always not on their best day, but I hear time and time again about how people talk about how some of their best days happen in our Parks Department and that's just a testament to you and your great staff, um, including Rachel, who always is quick to answer an off-the-ball question that I have. And I just appreciate all you do for our city and, and for Steve and for our great department. So thank you for, job well done.
Thank you and thank you for mentioning Rachel. She, you know, I've already heard a few comments from people that previewed this presentation and said that it was very visually appealing and lots of photos and Rachel put that together and many other things for me. So thank you, Rachel.
She does make you look good.
I appreciate that.
Ms. Mylon.
Oh, Mike.
A very, very nice presentation. I, I previewed it and was like, wow, it's very professional. The photos were amazing. We've already discussed most of this stuff, but, uh, I just wanted to say thank you to you and the whole team. You guys truly are the fun department and our parks are so amazing. I can't, I mean, we all, we do this because Meridian is the best place to live, right? I can't imagine Meridian without our parks, the way that they are. So, uh, it's, it's what makes Meridian great, one of the most important things. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And that's noted every single time we get recognition. So, as I remind your staff.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I accidentally found my way into a Boise Park the other day. We didn't even make it in it and we just turned around and left because there was so much goose crap that it was pointless to go to a Boise Park. So thank you for whatever you do that keeps them out of Meridian so you can actually use the acres of grass that we have at our parks.
Thank you.
I think maybe Roger or Mike might say they work really hard to keep that stuff out of the park. It's too bad some of the neighbors let them back in.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Item 9B is under our Parks Department. It's, um, for a 2019 budget amendment to the Charlie Roundtree field improvements. I see Mike making his way forward.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Uh, we're bringing forward a budget amendment for $58,500 that will allow us to do, uh, some field improvements in Fuller Park. Um, these fi, improvements will be on the field that we intend to dedicate to Charlie Roundtree in October when we take ownership of the park. in October when we take ownership of the park. Um, we, um, we had this as a, as part of our amendment last summer when we, we asked for funding for the park and this particular item. Some of the fencing, we still kept the ADA repairs in there, but the, the fence improvements were cut from that budget. So, uh, we had this also as a future enhancement or for next fiscal year, but thought that, um, there might be some momentum to get these improvements done prior to the field dedication. So with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Mike. Counsel, any questions? Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Seeing none, um, I move that we approve the FY19 budget amendment for Charlie Roundtree field improvements, Fuller Park, not, for not to exceed amount of $58,500.
I have a motion and a second, and need discussion from council. We have a motion to approve the item 9B for the budget amendment of $58,500. Mr. Clerk, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Portman.
Aye.
All eyes focused, Carrie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Item 9C is under our Finance Department with our quarterly update.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, good afternoon to you guys.
Hi, Todd.
Good afternoon. Appreciate you allowing us to present to you our quarterly updates for you. Uh, this is our May, our Q2 update for you. Brad Smith was just here, and he stole most of the thunder, so I think I'm gonna go through this presentation pretty quickly for you. Uh, this is the presentation where we present to you our demographics. I think what Brad presented to you was very relevant to what I'm gonna present to you through these slides. Again, demographics, permit data, what's next, what are we doing? So with that, the next eight graphs, uh, these are data points that we have collected from Compass, from Census, um, from Enterprise Fund, from the Community Development Team, from Finance Team. These are all comparatives between 2003 and the most recent data that we have. Uh, the first one is population, and I can let you know that Census, or Compass, sorry. Compass just gave us our 2019 number, audited, ready to go. 114, 680 is your 2019 number. Uh, we projected 114, 100, so we weren't too far off. But again, 114, 6 is your 2019 number. So if someone wants to know what is the population for 2019, that is the official number that we will post in our books going forward. So, a little bit of growth. Again, utility accounts, city fees, again, park acres. I didn't have the correct number, it's 334, not 332, so I apologize about that. So, um, a little bit more there. Uh, the next four slides, again, data collected via the four departments. Um, you'll see, uh, a trend, uh, single-family homes, multifamily. Uh, the taxable value, we just got that from Brad Smith, the far-right one. I projected 10.5. Um, I was not projecting 24%. I'll be very honest with you, and it came in at 11.8, so I'll be updating my slide today. Um, again, we were a little bit more conservative than 24% increase year over year. So that number will go up accordingly. So again, kinda going with Brad was talking about from Ada County. Uh, the slides here is, this represents all eight slides on one page. Uh, what we're trying to depict here is what Brad's saying is that we're growing. Um, some parts of the city are growing faster than others. Taxable value is our number-one thing, that's gonna go up a little bit more. Um, we can be confident that, uh, there are more homes, um, more retail spaces, uh, definitely more citizens to serve for the public safety team. Uh, definitely more things to provide for our citizens. This growth is happening. You guys are approving the development projects on a weekly basis, you know what's coming on. Unfortunately, things aren't getting any cheaper. So as we're growing faster than we're projecting, as we're growing faster, costs are coming in a little bit higher. I just wanna present to you that this, these data points assist the mayor and the directors with developing the 2020 budget, which you'll receive in two weeks. So again, some of these data points here are assisting us with how we develop our budget, not only for 2020, but also for our 10-year capital improvement, or capital financial plan. This is just a quick graph I wanted to share with you this year, first time I was able to find the Meridian unemployment rate. Um, we're doing better than everybody on, from a state to, uh, United States. I just shared this with you, not, and, and not to say, you know, look at the numbers, they're great. It's more of a concern from a recruitment process that I wanna bring to your attention. As we get the inflow of more people here to the city, as it's becoming more popular, as Brad Smith told us, we are finding challenges in recruiting. It's becoming tighter, it's becoming more difficult. And again, our, our team members are doing the best they can. HR's working very hard to get the recruit, the employees on our staff. Uh, but, and this is just to kinda remind us that we will continue to see a, a tight labor market as more people continue to move here, and we just need to be aware of that and plan accordingly uh, when we staff and approve our FTEs. That one, I, this one I'm skipping, sorry about that, and it didn't get deleted in time. The next, um, this next section kinda goes along with Brad was saying. Uh, this is a, um, website that tracks land information. I present this to you every year. This just echoes what Brad Smith is saying. Uh, Meridian is getting tons of submissions for development. You guys are seeing them, you're hearing about them. Community Development is managing them as fast as they can with the staff that they have. Again, this is just to remind us, yes, people are still interested in the city of Meridian. We are a very attractive, uh, city to live in, to work in, and raise a family in. And this slide just helps support that. This is Q1 of 2019, so just a few months old. Nothing new here, guys. I present this to you every year, it's up. Um, and you guys approve the permits, you guys approve the plans, you guys approve the development. 2018 was almost record-breaking, 2019 is on a strong pace right now. Again, I just present this to you to remind you that, um, we need to take all these into consideration, these approvals. It's putting more pressure on the public safety to get to the outer, uh, limits of the city. It's putting pressure on admin staff. The budget for 2020 takes this into consideration. So again, it's just more highlighting what Brad Smith has told you. Yeah, over the last 15 years, I think your, your city employees have done a phenomenal job in managing this insane, phenomenal growth. Um, again, we have asked them to work a little, you know, taxed them a little bit, uh, in the past, asked them to do more and more. I just want to put out, you know, to just remind you, as we continue to approve development, let's remind, remember about the employees. We're asking them to do more and more if we continue to push these developments faster and faster. Next is what's next. Again, Compass just gave us the 2019 number. This is where we were in 2020, it was 34,000. It's crazy to think, just 19 years ago, or 2000, sorry. We're just there, just 19 years ago. And now where are we going? The 114 is the new compass number we just got officially. 150 by 2020, 2030, 164 by 2040, guys. So again, Brad Smith told us the interest is high, market values are going up. We're building our budget to this, we're building our capital, uh, plans to this, and we're building our staffing models to this. So with this, you know, what is next? We've seen the gro, city grow tremendously over the last 15 years. You guys know what you're approving for the future. We're planning everything we can based on what you're approving, guys. Uh, both projects in the south and the 10-mile are gonna be huge impacts for us. Uh, I know Jeff and Public Works are working hard to make sure you get, they have the water system there, the public safety systems there. My request to you and the rest of the city and the department decision-makers is make sure we plan accordingly. Let's make sure we set up the next decision-makers up for success. And that is my ultimate, uh, desire, or that's my goal, is to make sure we not only do what we're doing today right, but also the next mayor, the next council members. We wanna make sure we set them up for success like we've done for the last 15 years. And that's just my request to all of us. So, with that, yeah, we've been growing, we continue to grow. Common theme here is growing, guys, and we need to consider, to discuss, collaborate, have sound and thorough meetings about everything we're doing because we are going to continue to grow, and we have a lot on our plate. And with that, I stand for any questions, and I echo what Mr. Smith said from Ada County today. It's busy out there, guys, and, uh, we're doing everything we can to meet your citizens' needs, I can promise you that. And just remember that the employees are working hard. That's, I can, I can tell you from the, from our, our Finance Department, everybody is working hard to make sure that the citizens get what they want. And with that, I stand for any questions.
And I think every director can tell you this, the very same. Counsel, any questions? Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Okay, item 9D is our vehicle-sharing e-scooter program update, and I will turn this over to Mr. Nary.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I can start. You may have some specific questions about the process, Keith Watts is here, he can answer that. This is really just a project update of the process and where we are. Um, there was an RFP that was issued on March 15th. A committee was formed, uh, with Scott Coliani from Police, Mike Barton from Parks, Emily Kane from my office, Caleb Hood from Planning, Josh Everts from the Citizens, Samantha Mitchell, who I don't recall specifically what her interest was, and Britton Davis, who I believe is part of MYAC, I think.
Yes.
So, we had, so we had a mixture of both city staff as well as citizens, uh, that expressed interest in this particular area. Uh, they issued the RFP on March 15th. It was then, there were two proposals that were submitted, one from Bird, one from Lime. On April 15th, the materials were sent for evaluation to the committee. Uh, they had a scoring criteria based on a variety of different things that were contained within the RFP of what the city was looking for in a proposal. That was then, the evaluation team met on April 24th. They reviewed and discussed their proposals and the various attributes of each of the providers. The evaluators then released to finalize their evaluations and do their scoring and return them to the purchasing manager. Uh, they received the scores in the committee in April 29th, May 3rd. Purchasing sent the results back to the committee, confirming the committee's decision. The recommendation from the committee was for one single vendor, which was Bird, uh, to be the, selected as the, um, provider for this, um, franchise. The, May 6th, the notice of intent was issued to Bird, notice was given to Lime that they were not selected. We've had a number of inquiries, both from council as well as public, um, public primarily Lime, in regards to the information, the scoring, and the RFPs and things like that, which we have responded to and provided them all the information they've requested. Um, there is an opportunity, help me clarify a little bit from process standpoint. When you do an RFP, if there's questions or concerns or misunderstandings or a lack of clarity or whatever that may be in the, in the RFP, there is an opportunity you have upfront before it is, before it is, uh, released for, um, within the timeframe to comply, there's an opportunity to get clarification. And we have that happen both in, in bids for, um, for, uh, Public Works projects as well as RFPs. So we get questions, and most times, and, and Mr. Watts can be more specific if you have a question, if we get a question, almost always, the response goes back to all the providers. So that way, every, figuring if one person has a question, they probably all have the same question. So we always provide clarification, um, to anyone who asks and anyone who's, who's participated. In this case, there weren't any. So there was no concern, or at least no thing expressed to the city that the bid, the RFP was unclear, or the, the desire, what the city wanted was unclear. So the process followed its normal course. When it's completed, there's also an opportunity, um, to protest the award. Now, the protest is not of the awardee, the protest is of the process to select the awardee. So, again, there is an opportunity if someone has an issue. It's a little bit more, it's a little bit more difficult in most of them, again, if you're looking at a public works project. Um, and, and I will, I'll echo something that Mr. Watts has said to us a number of times. Lots of people say they're gonna protest, all the time. Lots of people tell me they're gonna file a tort claim, all the time. Doesn't necessarily mean they're going to, and doesn't necessarily mean it has merit. But that's not an uncommon, um, response from an unsuccessful bidder, whether it's a project or whether it's an RFP. So we try to work with them and try to figure out what their concerns are. But, you know, in the RFP, the process is what a protest would be regarding. Not who was selected, but how the process occurred. So if there's a flaw or an error or something to that point, then that can go back to Mr. Watts for evaluation and determination of whether that is something that could be handled at the administrative staff level, or whether that's something that would rise to a council-level decision. At this juncture, we don't have any of that. So, it really was, uh, today was simply to tell you where we were. Uh, we have, um, we have a contract that is being discussed between Bird and the city, uh, to meet the, the requirements within the RFP, and we haven't reached a final decision on that, on that contract at this point. But it has been communicated to them, and there is some back and forth that's occurring on that. That's all I have on the process, and again, Mr. Watts is here if you have specific questions about any piece of the process. I, again, I wasn't on the committee, so I wasn't involved with that, so. Questions?
Thank you, Bill. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I, I have a question, and, and I don't know if it's the right time or not, and I don't know who to ask it to. But I know that one of the pieces that council had discussed with going with two operators was the amount of revenue required to kind of offset the cost of, of managing this program. Now we've cut that amount in half. So is there, is, is there, will there be discussion in the negotiations then to increase the amount that we're going to ask from the operator, offset the costs? I just wanna make sure that we're not asking taxpayers to subsidize our scooter program because we only selected one vendor instead of two. I just know there's a unintended consequence that we want.
And, and maybe Mr. Watts can answer that better. I think what, when I spoke with this Kane today on the amount, I think the amount that we had settled on, and, and frankly, I apologize, I don't recall if this is the amount from the prior discussions or whether the committee discussed it. Um, but I think approximately from the June 1st to December 31st, which is the period of this contract, it's approximately $14,000. So, I, I don't know if that's, and, and again, we're sort of guestimating a little bit on what resources of the city are necessary and how that's gonna be accomplished, and what, what subsidization, subsidizing is done, if, if any. But that, the, the direction was in regards to the selection, the council's direction was up to two. And, and partly cuz if you recall, the conversation was kinda dependent on scoring. You know, you could have one that scored really well, one not so much. And there was some confusion or misunderstanding about that for some folks. So we had, Mr. Watts spoke directly with the committee members and asked them specifically if they, when they selected one, did they believe they could only select one, or did they only want to choose one? Two of the members said they didn't understand that they, they could select more than one, and they didn't care. The other, all the other five members of the committee said, no, we were, we didn't necessarily know whether we could or not, that doesn't matter. We really only thought the Bird proposal was the appropriate choice for the city. So it wasn't a decision where they felt like they were restricted or anything. They felt that that was the proper and appropriate vendor to select, and they didn't feel that two were appropriate. So, um, I don't know if that answers your first part of your question, but that, that was what they were looking at, was simply the, uh, the particular program and, and the cost for that.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Question, I guess, for Ms. Nary, is where, where do we go then from here?
So, what happens now is the, again, we will have that, hopefully fairly soon, we'll have the contract back, um, with, again, where there's some, it's typical in most of these, there's generally a little bit of negotiation on some terms or conditions. Again, there's a sample that's provided as part of the RFP. So, we hope we'll have that, um, then within the next week or two, at the most. I don't know if Keith has a target in mind, I think a week or two is the norm. But, so then, you have that back in front of you for approval or not? And I do have, before Keith starts, um, Ms. Kane did advise me here that they, they still use the same $25,000 franchise fee number. If you recall, the earlier discussion was to prorate it based on when it would be awarded. So that $25,000 fee, then, if we go from June to December, ends up being 14,000, right?
Uh, just for clarification, we are anticipating having the contract ready for the 28th of this month.
And that contract would state when this, the rollout would be?
Correct. And I believe in the contract, uh, I believe it is... And I believe in the contract, I believe it is, the first week of June is anticipated. I have to look through it again, I have it up in front of me, but I believe it's the first week of June, and it will run through December 31st of this year.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Not a question, just want to express kind of some frustration over how the process kind of went here. The last time that council had a discussion prior to the RFP being published, the discussion surrounded the point that then Councilman Barton articulated very clearly in his motion that it was to be up to two. That motion that was voted unanimously on was ignored. In the opening paragraph of the RFP, under purpose, it spoke of an exclusive contract being awarded to the chosen proposer. And we explained that away by saying, aren't we lucky that all but one of the board was ignorant of this major point that was in the opening paragraph under purpose of the RFP? So luckily, they made a decision based on not realizing that was right there. Whether other companies might have looked at the RFP, read that opening paragraph and said, well, we haven't been involved in the process in Meridian, there's two that have been heavily involved in it, we're not going to bother. I don't know if anybody else looked at it, but that's what was in there, that's what was published. I mean, I don't have a problem with the decision of one, that was the point of up to two, but I just kind of frustrated that the language wasn't changed even after we clearly asked that it be changed.
Members of the council, Councilmember Palmer, I guess I would disagree that the council's direction was ignored. I don't think exclusive, again, it's a public process. If there was a person, like you're suggesting, that didn't understand whether or not they would be eligible or be considered, well, that's when they're supposed to ask. There's no way for us to know, ever, that someone reads it and reads it and interprets it in a way that was not intended. So I don't know how to ever answer that question on any RFP. But there always is an opportunity to ask. There are other vendors in the marketplace, we know that. Whether they choose to or not, for whatever reason they choose to or not, is not something we can control. So I don't believe it was ignored. I don't know if exclusive was, it wasn't a concern to the two that submitted. They didn't have an issue on whether that was one or two, or exclusive to Meridian's method of operations or method of what we desired as a community. I don't know what they interpreted that to mean, because they didn't ask. But they certainly submitted without it being of a concern to them to submit. So I respectfully disagree. I don't think anything was ignored. I think the council, the committee, all felt subsequently that was not an issue to them. They selected the vendor they felt was the most appropriate. They didn't feel like two vendors were appropriate for a majority of the group.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
And that's fine. Really, it just comes back down to the point of, the entire discussion surrounded that it was to be up to two. The motion clearly specified that, and the RFP clearly said an exclusive contract would be awarded. Completely opposite of the entire discussion and specific motion that was made. Whether anybody didn't catch that, and potentially wanting to submit a proposal, or in submitting a proposal, or in being on the committee, I think it's sad that it wasn't realized. That it's concerning that we're using that as the explanation to explain in a way that it didn't really matter because they didn't really realize it was in there. But the fact that that's the action council tried to take, and that that's not what was put in there because that's not what was wanted.
Any other questions or comments from council? You know, certainly, it was an oversight, and I think a number of the companies interested in perhaps doing it was following the discussion and council's direction and decision. Certainly, if this council feels that it needs to go back out, we can do that. You can disqualify any responding proposals and put it out again and see if additional responses are made. So I understand your concern, and certainly, there are options at this point.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Maybe, I guess, along that, oh, is this in the process that we're going to repeat on an annual basis? I was in Boise this morning, and I see that there's a third operator now that's open or operating called Spin. Should they or any of the other companies that want to engage, is that then on an annual process with the same RFP committee, following the same process moving forward? Where do we go from here in terms of our program?
Well, I can address, this year's program is just a one-year deal. So this is taking us through December 31st. If the city council wishes to do this again next year, we would most likely issue another RFP and see if we have additional vendors interested and do the same process.
Madam Mayor, just maybe a comment then. I think I mentioned this in our previous meeting. It may be advantageous for us as a city to work towards maybe partnering with VRT and looking at a regional scooter program, so we don't have to deal with these challenges. We can provide a more cohesive program that's region-wide. I know some of us have our own opinions on VRT, but this is transit, and we have a more regionalized system, we can, I think, free ourselves from some of these challenges, for what it's worth.
Madam Mayor.
I think that's an interesting idea. I don't know with the enforcement aspect of it, if they could do that, but it's certainly something that could be looked into. Yes, Ms. Mylon.
I would just like to recommend that if we do follow, go through this and accept this proposal, that there's something more definite on the books, that some, an RFP should go out in November, December of this year. Because this is an annual contract, so the contract would need to begin January 1st. So a decision would actually need to be made at the end of this year. So I just want to make sure that that's, you know, out there in the plans.
Sure, that can be something that can be set up in advance. And to be honest, I would assume that council will want to hear the feedback on how this first year goes to decide whether or not you want to do this again for another year.
Right. We just don't want to wait till next year, that shorter window, so have that report in like November, and let's see how it went through the summer and the fall.
I think that's a great idea, maybe have a report back to council the beginning of September, because you would have to put it out again, and you want to talk process, you want to bring back any data that we've been able to gain from the first several months of use and see how that goes, so that you are prepared going into the next calendar year.
Correct. And I would also recommend, if this is something that works out and is favorable to the city, that council would possibly suggest a multi-year agreement. If this is something that looks like it's going to be sustainable within our city, then I think a, at least an option for multi-years on the agreement would be feasible. So we're not doing this every year. We don't like to do procurements every single year for reoccurring services. So if we can set this up on a multi-year contract, that would be preferable.
Madam Mayor. I agree, you know, or at least a renewal option, right? The only caveat would be that we did allow up to two. So if we have one vendor, we need, and you wanted to have a renewal with that vendor because they've been performing wonderfully, they can have a renewal, and then you can still put an RFP out for a possible second vendor. And either pick one or not. If we have two vendors who are both wonderful vendors and we don't have any problems, then I don't see a problem with having a renewal option. But since we did say it's up to two, I think we should at least allow for the option of the two.
Yeah, I would recommend that as well.
Thanks, Keith.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, this was just an update, and it will be brought back, it sounds like the last in two weeks.
Yeah, in two weeks, we expect to have a contract before you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Item 90 is under our Public Works Department with our environmental program plan update. You all receive the environmental plan via your box as well as an email follow-up. So I'll turn this over to Dave.
Good afternoon, councilmembers and mayor. Thanks for your time. Respecting the time, we'll be brief. Jason and I are going to run through the plan, the environmental programs plan, at a high level. But we did want to make sure that we have the conversation today and get your feedback and direction, because we do find it not only an exciting topic, but one that values input from you all as well as the community. So with that, I'll jump right in. For some of you, this may be new, and we can appreciate that. And in fact, I don't know if a prior version has been presented to council before, but there is a prior version from 2015 that the Public Works Department had as well. So our plan is a working plan highlighting current state analysis, which focuses on ongoing responsibilities driven by regulatory rules, as well as actions that improve our business needs and operations. The plan also frames long-term goals and initiatives, some of which are low-hanging fruit, which we can accomplish today and we have been doing, some of which require more analysis, more conversation with you all. And so we're looking for some of that direction from you, from a conceptual level, a high level, around those types of things that we should move forward. The long-term, excuse me, one of the other things that we're looking for is a direction from you all as to whether or not Meridian should have a longer-term vision of environmental or sustainability initiatives, or focus rather on project-by-project, case-by-case initiatives as they come up, or something in between. And we're here to affect that conversation and to have those conversations as we move So when we talk about all the factors that we consider in our sustainable initiatives as we move forward, we refer to in our department is the triple bottom line. We know it's been used a lot, but it's still very relevant to what we do today. Research continues to find that economic development is connected to environmental and social factors, and that it's beneficial for communities to consider the relationships between economic growth, well-being of our community, and sustaining economies. There's a recent survey out there, over 91% of economic development professionals said it's important to consider the triple bottom line in these ongoing economic development programs and discussions. In this regard, our plan's trying to connect projects and objectives that reduce the impact of our surrounding environment and community, and save financial resources at the same time, because we think that all of those are important in that triple bottom line. So I referred a little bit to the history of our program and our plan. Environmental Programs Plan started back in 2010 in Public Works. And that was really a way to kind of get boots on the ground and start making some inroads and making some efforts. 2015, we saw the first draft of our plan, and it was developed as a way to capture and plan the department activities in Public Works with more of a defined approach. Between then and now, we've had the city strategic plan. We've also had some transitions in our department, and so now we're trying to align the environmental efforts that we conduct on a day-to-day basis, as well as the long-term initiatives that we have going forward, with the strategic plan and the vision of the community and the vision of you all as our leaders. A little touch on the strategic plan as well, before I turn this over to Jason. In support of the strategic plan objectives that we have, the plan identifies both internal and external efforts. Internally, we've been evaluating things like, for example, streetlights and city hall lighting upgrades to transition to LED. In fact, you'll see in the budget conversations coming up, there'll be a proposal for streetlight LED conversions. The plan also identifies ways to support community efforts. For instance, a pilot program that we conducted with the Parks and Rec Department for a waterwise class was a good success. We just ran this a couple months ago, and it filled up almost immediately and had a lot of positive feedback, and we appreciate working with Parks and Rec in that regard. The energy bag program is another type of program that the community asked for and was looking for, and you all were responsive in that and helped us get that going forward. So based on a little bit of effort that we've made thus far, we know there's both an interest in the community and in the city to advance some of these efforts, and the opportunity, and operationally, not only to do the right thing, but those things that also help us find cost savings. So I'll turn it over to Jason. He's going to run through the programs themselves, and then we'll close it out with conversation and feedback from y'all.
Hi, Jason, thank you for being here.
Hi, thank you. As Dave said, I'm going to go through some of the more specifics that are in the environmental program plan. So the plan outlines key strategies and concepts in five programs, as you can see here. Those that range from more of the regulatory compliance base, such as stormwater or waterways and floodplain administration, to those that meet more community or business needs or city strategic plan needs from education outreach and sustainable operations. I'm going to go through each of these programs at a high level. There's a lot more detail that we can get into, as you can see if you've read the plan. But I'm happy to answer any more specific questions at the end or come back at a later date to talk about one program in particular, if that's of interest. So I'll start with stormwater, but first, I'd like to go through the format of the slide, as you'll see this slide again for the next four programs after this. So in the top left, we have our program objectives, and then on the left, we have two different types of ongoing activities. Those that meet the regulatory needs and those that are more ongoing business needs, maybe not tied to a specific law or regulation. And on the right, we have the community and strategic initiatives. So here is where we want to see the program go, or actions we've done more recently that are somewhat new and different. And on stormwater, so there's really two types of stormwater programs that we look at. The municipal stormwater system, the MS4, and that's the system that ACHD owns and operates. So all the storm drains in the city of Meridian and the public roads are operated by ACHD, and they hold that permit with EPA. So coordination with ACHD is important for us. And the other one is construction general permitting, the EPA program on any construction sites. And with that, we review and approve stormwater pollution prevention plans on all our capital projects and take care of the permitting with EPA. Ongoing business needs include training our public works inspection staff, training our code enforcement staff, our project managers, and complaint response. So complaints from the public are typically excessive trackout in the neighborhoods, dust certainly, trash and debris from construction sites. And those two are really tied to our community's strategic initiatives. We recently brought a training and certification program in-house. Previously, we would send our inspectors and project managers to a training at a vendor like College of Western Idaho to get a certification for competence in stormwater inspections. So I can now teach that in class. So I recently taught almost 40 different people in our public works and code enforcement and went through this class. And improving complaint response and enforcement capabilities, hopefully being able to address those complaints in a more timely and efficient manner, maybe before they get too out of hand. Things like working with our community development, building inspection and code enforcement, all getting on the same page, knowing what to look for, knowing how to address those issues a little quicker, and looking at what type of enforcement tools that we currently have, or what we might need if we see there's a problem that we can't address.
That's fantastic. That's really cool.
Yeah, I know those complaints kind of get tossed, you know, a wide net, so they get all over. I only receive a small fraction of them. I know there's a lot more that probably don't even come to me. Our next program, waterways and irrigation, this addresses the network of streams, canals, drains and laterals that run through the city of Meridian. On our regulatory activities, we review our capital projects for things like 404 permits with the Army Corps of Engineers, stream alteration permits with IDWR, 401 certifications. Anytime we cross a waterway, we've got to look at all of these things, including license agreements with irrigation districts. Our ongoing business needs, floodplain mitigation and stream restoration, not tied to a regulation but could support water quality initiatives, or certainly in our floodplain program through mitigation and reducing that floodplain. Those are really opportunistic when we have the opportunity in certain stream stretches where everyone's on board. And addressing public concerns and complaints. And on our waterways, that's typically illegal And on our waterways, that's typically illegal dumping, streambank erosion, encroachments, things like that, where we help work with the irrigation districts and code enforcement to resolve those issues. And our community and strategic initiatives, as you know, we have a reclaimed water system at our wastewater resource recovery facility. And while we plan on continuing operating that program as is right now, we are open to talking with stakeholders on alternative methods of delivery. So right now, that goes out to a limited amount of customers and purple pipe. There are options of putting that into a existing surface water canal. I know a lot of other cities such as Napa are already looking at that, and we'll continue to have those conversations. And encourage stakeholder engagement in hazard mitigation program. It's getting the irrigation companies primarily on board and addressing their facilities in the context of Ada County Hazard Mitigation Plan. And floodplain administration, and that's one of the more established programs that fall under this environmental programs umbrella. This is primarily done to maintain good standing in the NFIP National Flood Insurance Program, which allows our residents to purchase flood insurance on their properties and allows us to receive FEMA disaster assistance. Without participating in this, we don't get that. It's a lot of regulatory activities, serving as the community official and official map repository for Meridian, developing and maintaining a flood damage prevention ordinance, which includes floodplain development permitting. So there's a broad range of development that occurs in the floodplain and all needs to be reviewed and permitted. Business needs include a community rating system. It's a program that Meridian participates in. It allows a reduction in flood insurance rates by doing what may be seen as above and beyond the minimum NFIP, but it's really things that we're already doing, such as education and outreach and a few other programs. Participating in the Ada County Hazard Mitigation Program, which is one of those community rating system activities to get that discount. Our community and strategic initiatives, evaluating that CRS rating, doing a cost-benefit analysis, what would it take to go up a rating allowing a higher reduction in rates compared to the cost and time that it would take our staff to get to that level? So we want to look at that. Is it worth it? You don't really know. Some one thing we want to look at. Update our floodplain ordinance. You may have heard the Lower Boise River maps that FEMA has been working on for the past six, seven, eight years, I think. At the time that when they're adopted, which we've heard that there will be a letter of final determination sometime this late fall, maybe September, but at that time, I'll come back to you as we have to update our ordinance to adopt those new maps and adopt any other changes that we see maybe we need to work on in our ordinance. Educating staff on floodplain permit and inspections, so that's from our community development, building inspection, code enforcement staff, all getting on the same page. With education and outreach, we move from more of our regulatory and compliance-based program to those community needs and strategic plan goals, and we really want this program aligned to that strategic plan goal of engaging community partnerships. So we only have ongoing business needs, and one of those is in our environmental exits awards program, which I came here last month, and we had that. Outreach through our Public Works Weeks Expo, it's coming up very soon. Our social media outreach, like every department, I think, has increased lately. You may have seen some of those Trash Talk Tuesdays or Waterwise Wednesdays and really hitting some of these topics through social media. And you may have seen the interpretive displays that we have out at our wastewater resource recovery facility.
I must say that Shandy does great at trash talk.
Yes, I hope we can continue that program. Community and strategic initiatives, as David mentioned, we have a community survey coming out soon, which is primarily solid waste-based, but we do still have some overarching environmental-based questions where we hope to get a community perspective. Our sustainability-themed classes, one of our tactics is in our strategic plan, which we partnered with the University of Idaho and the Parks Department to bring in that class on designing a water-conserving landscape. There's a lot of potential there. And improving outreach on trash and recycling. As you know, there's been a lot of changes in that realm, and I think we'll continue to have a lot more changes. We're happy to have a solid waste coordinator on board now, so Tom Ott is able to really get on fine-tuning our outreach message on what needs to be done in the trash and recycling world. From that, our fifth environmental program is really three complementary but separate programs, energy efficiency conservation, water conservation, and waste reduction. And these are really developed to meet that city strategic plan objective, develop citywide internal sustainable programs. And similar to these larger programs, I'll go through these at a real high level, but they could get a lot deeper in each of these as well. I'll highlight some of the activities that we've done and kind of ones we want to investigate. Energy efficiency and conservation has been of a lot of interest to our sustainable operations team, where we're trying to identify some of these initiatives. They're really attractive because technological advances have made these a lot more feasible, along with Idaho Power offering generous incentives to kind of make those returns a lot easier to handle. Things we've already done are wastewater and water utilities have been upgrading their motors, pumps, drives, installing variable frequency drives whenever they can. They've been doing that work for, you know, ten years now. They keep finding things, but we're fine-tuning it. And part of that's done through Idaho Power cohorts. Idaho Power brings in consultants, and they have the utilities participate in a program to identify more energy conservation measures. Our water utility has identified as one of the most efficient in southwest Idaho, so they're very proud of that. Facility lighting upgrades, we've already started some of those, such as the Home Court facility recently. I know we've retrofitted some fire stations as well. That really leads us to our initiatives because there's a lot of opportunity there in lighting. One we're looking at is City Hall, retrofitting all the fluorescents here to LEDs, exploring what kind of a process that would take. Retrofitting streetlights to LEDs, as David mentioned, and you've heard about getting some amendments to start that program, but there's a lot of opportunity there that we really need to look harder at. Our wastewater group identified a eration, post-eration blower at their recovery facility that could be upgraded, that has a very low return on investment, I think about two years. So it's, again, that low-hanging fruit that we're still identifying. And evaluating biogas for beneficial use. It's using that digester biogas to power something like a combined heat power engine, so we create electricity and heat from that biogas. Currently, it's flared out into the atmosphere most of the time. Some of it's used for heat. Water conservation. So as you can see here in the objectives, the objective is to preserve, protect, and extend the useful life of the city's water supply. So we think we're currently producing water at a sustainable rate. We don't think we're depleting the aquifer. That's what the researchers told us. But by conserving water, we could really make that resource last a lot longer and have that available for future growth, future industries, and perhaps delay some capital expenditures in the future. So we have a water conservation plan, but it was last updated in 2013. So that's an obvious area to look at, and it's an initiative, is updating that plan, which includes a lot of our outreach and education materials. So just giving that a good look, updating it as needed, updating our objectives, what we want to do with water conservation. And as we already talked about, our Class A wastewater reuse program is really water conservation as well because we're using that instead of producing new fresh water by pumping it from the ground. And as I said, we're continuing that the way it is now, but always engaged for those new opportunities if they make sense for us, and also looking at the rules and regulations around that program, you know, if those improve, that might make other uses more attractive. And our third, sustainable operations program, waste reduction. We currently have recycling in all of our facilities, including, you know, blue bins in all of our offices here at City Hall, and we've moved to a more electronic documents-based program. I know our community development has really gone pretty far in that in going with project docs and submitting most of the applications and plans and plans reviews, all of them being done electronically now. Despite, you know, giving this plan out to all of you and killing the trees for doing that, we hope this is going to be electronic as well because it's the environmental plan and it probably should be. Initiatives, similar to the public education and outreach to employees on where the recycling program's at, how we could better manage it. Part of that includes green purchasing, not producing that waste in the first place, evaluating that, and evaluating biosolids disposal. Currently, we take a lot of that to the landfill, and there are potential other uses for it, so we're looking at that. And so timeline, next steps. This is, this slide is an example of the sheet that's in the back of the environmental plan. It's a little reduced to fit on this page, but it has our general roadmap of when we want some of these items completed. If you look in the plan, it has who's going to do them, whether it meets a city strategic plan objective as well, way to track where we want to go with that. With that, I'll hand it back over to Dave to wrap things up.
Thank you, council. There's not much more. Hopefully, you've had a chance to read our plan, and we know you've got it in front of you. Really, it lays out the ongoing and the regulatory work that we're doing today and have had to do, and we feel like it is a good framework to establish not only some of those project-by-project things that we can look at today through our analysis efforts and either execute or come to you and ask to execute, but also establish this conversation as sort of what's the long term? What's the goal? Are we meeting the goals that you all see, that the community sees? We hope to get some good feedback through things like our community survey that we're going to do this quarter, and we also like feedback from you. So with that, maybe I'll just open it up for discussion and leave it there.
Thank you, Dave and Jason. A lot of thought went into this. This is a very comprehensive document, and I appreciated sitting down with you and discussing some of it prior to this, but it's exciting to see it all in one form and very concise. And I think Councilmember Mylan responded earlier today, just someone paying attention to efficiency of our precious resources and looking at long-term sustainability so that our future generations can enjoy the same community that we're enjoying today, I think is very important.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Council, you have questions, feedback? Certainly, if you don't have it tonight, I would invite you to comment to staff. Mr. Borden?
It's maybe not a question, but as you read through it, it's just overwhelming to see all of the objectives and resources, the schedule and action items, anything that you could possibly think of, it seems like you've covered. So going through the report, it's so comprehensive, and it's much appreciation for the diligence that's done in not only preparing it and tracking it and measuring it, our successes, both internal and external with our community. So, but when I first went through it, I couldn't really find anything more other than, that's an awesome idea. That's a great program. Great to see you following through with that. So we'll continue to read, but the only preliminary response for me is it's just outstanding. You've covered so many, so many ways to steward those resources efficiently, proactively, that makes us quite proud to have you do it. Good job.
Mayor and Councilman Borden, thank you. We appreciate that feedback. I think that's not only a testament to the efforts that Jason's made, but the direction that we get from our leadership as well as you all on a day-to-day basis, to really focus on all aspects as one, you know, whether it's the financial of the community or the environment, really consider those all holistically as one and have a conversation and evaluation around it. So appreciate it.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Guys, who's the intended audience? And who are you hoping reads this? Because I agree with Councilmember Borden, I think it's very comprehensive. I'm just curious who you're hoping picks it up and reads it, who we're wanting to make sure reads it? Help me understand that piece.
Madam Mayor and Councilman Cavanagh, really, I think in conversations, one of the intent is to take and discern this information down into more user-friendly version online. The document as a whole is absolutely for anybody, public consumption, you all, our leadership team, as well as our staff, to help shape direction. And maybe to a little bit of Mr. Borden's comment, there's a lot of information, and so it's hard for us to segment it out and not have a holistic approach, but at the same time, once you put holistic approach together, it becomes a ton of information. So I think truly going forward, looking for a way to simplify it for the community's consumption.
Madam Mayor, a couple follow-ups. How much of the actions that are prescribed in this plan are regulatory-driven? Is it the feds that are driving us to do some of this? Is some of this state-imposed? Is it self-imposed?
I would say in the first three programs, a lot of it is regulatory, and, you know, it's really divided into two things for the whole environmental program, those that are programs that are designed to meet those regulatory and compliance needs, and those which are more the city strategic plan and how we plan on meeting those objectives and tactics that are in that plan. So I'd say the majority of the first three are and not the later two programs.
Madam Mayor, a couple other points, if I may, just then for feedback, some things that maybe I would like to see is the cost benefits of the programs that we're choosing to do. And Dave, you hit, I think, the nail on the head right from the get-go about the economic development implications. I think that's a piece that we need to also highlight because all those are going to come at cost, and being able to showcase the cost benefits or the economic recovery that can come from that. The other piece that I just, I noticed was missing was really any piece about air quality. And I know Councilmember Little Roberts, it's on our air quality board, that's something that we continue to hear more and more as an area of concern. I know we don't have a lot of jurisdictional oversight of that, but if we're talking about our environment, we're talking about things we're doing internally in regards to paper, I would hope that we are also maybe leading that conversation about air quality in the valley as well.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, that's a great point, and one that we can continue to have, and that's sort of related to the strategic objective about community stakeholdership is working with the DEQs of the world and working with the other entities across the valley to help affect that. There's, you know, there's lots of considerations that go into that, and we'll be sure to add that in.
Work.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylan.
So were you looking, at the beginning of this, you said you wanted to have a conversation, and you were looking for direction a little bit to a long-term plan or to keep them separate? Am I right? What were you looking for now?
Yeah. Madam Mayor and Councilwoman Mylan, I think in our mind, from an environmental perspective, you certainly have the regulatory and ongoing day-to-day things that we're doing and accomplishing, and within those, we can perform cost-benefit analysis to evaluate projects on a project-by-project basis. I think one of the questions we have that's out there is whether or not there's a desire by the council to have additional, longer-term, higher-level visioning efforts to establish what the community and where the community wants to go, whether that be driving some stake in the ground around air quality, or whether that be driving a stake in the ground around energy consumption, things of that nature. So that's the discussion and the information that we're happy to take any feedback.
I mean, I think it's very important to have those long-term goals and visions. Obviously, it's a living document that's going to change with the environment around us and depending on how things are changing and technology and everything else. I like having, how you have it all separate but as one. I think every, all five are very important. Obviously, the ones that are regulated are, we don't really have an option on. I think they're all very important, though, and I think, you know, including the community outreach and education, what we do around here. Having a long-term goal, though, and vision, still, anything that has a cost to it has to go through the budget process. So it's kind of like, yes, but no?
Madam Mayor and Councilwoman, I appreciate that perspective, and that's what we deal with every day is, are those, what's exciting about this program is the innovation. innovation that's out there. You know, Jason mentioned combined heat power in the conversations that we've had, just initially at a high level to say, what does something like that at the treatment plant look like, not only for us, but for Idaho Power and the operators out at the treatment plant? It's exciting, but it's got a lot of challenges to it operationally. It's got a lot of cost associated with it. And then what does the rest of the stakeholder view look like? So I appreciate that, and we'll, we consider that moving forward.
Madam Mayor, one more thing. So what, one of the things you talked about was like, streetlights or retrofitting the City Hall with LED lights. And I think those are the kind of things that especially the cost analysis is going to be really important. And if you can get estimates on the cost savings over time with electricity, you know, how, what, how long is, how long does it take to pay for itself? And then with the streetlights, I mean, if you're doing it as needed, I mean, it makes total sense. Or if we're replacing good bulbs that we just replaced with LED, then we're wasting money. See what I'm saying? So it's really about the planning and how it's done, but I'm very supportive of all of it. Amazing job, you guys. Thank you.
You're talking to the department that does an ROI cost-benefit analysis on everything.
I know.
You know, and this, this document is an initial. It is part of the strategic plan, but it also will evolve, especially as Jason mentioned, they go out with a community survey. Priority-based budgeting does start to look at what is mandatory, if it's regulatory, if it's business necessary, and then if it's a community priority. Once you establish those community priorities, that information will be back here in front of council to, to get feedback on if it's something that the council wants the city to move in that direction, and what associated cost could be, and if it has some nexus with a mandatory or regulatory type of a, an aspect. I appreciate the forward thinking and looking at finding efficiencies and eliminating redundancies. And so I think over time, this document will reflect a lot of those things that they're doing to be more environmentally conscientious, but also to be more efficiency, efficient in cost and delivery of service. So I, I was excited about the report and appreciated all the work, the time, and it just is a great reflection of the innovative thinkers that we have in Public Works, and excited to see how you move forward.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate the feedback.
Okay, also under Public Works, we have Item 9F, which is a design standards update.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So in 2016, we implemented the first-ever City of Meridian Design Standards Document. And just kind of to give you a little bit of background, it's not going to take very long, but that was a really substantial effort to come up with a document that provided basically an instruction manual to the consulting engineers and designers who do business with the City of Meridian. You may have a question as to how does this differ than our specifications? Well, specifications are really the instructions to a contractor when he's out in the field. It tells him exactly how to construct a manhole. The design standards are more of the instructions to those preparing plans, telling them, how often do you place a manhole, and where do you want it? And so it provides a little bit different information. So we created the design standards 2016, implemented them, and they've been serving us ever since, but it's about three years old, and it was the first-ever document, and as time has gone on, there have been things that have come up that we've realized, we need to update that, we need to change this, we need to tweak it here and there. So we embarked about a year ago in an effort to take a look at, we developed subcommittees that took a look at every one of the chapters within the design standards and provided recommendations on changes that needed to be made for the next generation of the Design Standards Manual. Those subcommittee leaders came back, and we assembled sort of a, excuse me, a draft document, and we took that draft document, and we put it out on the internet and with a hot link, asking for feedback. We also sent out emails to consultants that do business with, or not consultants for us, but essentially design consultants that do business with the developer world that submit plans to the City of Meridian, contractors and developers, and asked for their feedback. We specifically went to the BCA and said, well, we've got this new draft document, would you like us to come and do a presentation to the BCA? And the BCA said, no, but we'd like to have a smaller committee or smaller group come and meet with you. So we organized a focus group with three members of the BCA, who are also developers in our community, and they came and provided feedback. We received that feedback. Honestly, that's the only feedback we received. We didn't get any actually from the outreach that we did to the, to the more broader group. But we did get some feedback, specifically on six different items from that group. We took a look at that feedback and told them that we would get back to them. We revised the document, made edits to the document. I can go through each one of those individually, but the bottom line is, we were able to, I think in almost every case, move in a direction which was the way they wanted us to go without compromising what we felt was a critical need that we had. So recently responded back to that group, said we now have a new draft document, it's out on the web, you can go look at it, make comment, and we're going to take it to City Council and seek adoption so that we can start utilizing it as a new document. Haven't received any comments from any of them. My feedback, I have talked to one of them personally since then, my feedback was that they're generally happy, and so I think maybe that's why you don't see anybody here tonight. And so I'm here tonight just basically asking for your approval to go ahead and implement the document. And we don't do this with the specifications, but we do it with the design standards because they're a little bit different, and seeking your okay to get it adopted and put it into place. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Warren. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Warren, where does that Design Standards live? I know that it wasn't necessarily included in our packet. Is that something that is easily accessible online for the development community to access? Is it something that when they come in, we're providing to them? Help me understand that particular piece.
The Design Standards is on the internet. It's under the Development Services connection. I think we actually have a link to it from Engineering as well, but there's a section into Development Services which is sort of where the repository for all information that's helpful for designers and people that are trying to do business with community development. And if you go in there, it's listed in there. Right now, there's actually supposed to be two documents. There's the old version, which has been around for three years, and there's a new draft one, which is labeled as draft until we adopt it, and then we'll take the other one down.
Madam Mayor, Warren, is there any immediate rush for us to approve this today, your perspective?
I don't know that there's an immediate rush. We're just, you know, the process has taken us a year. We've gone through a fairly significant outreach, and we're just simply looking to get it implemented. We'd like to implement it sooner rather than later to cover the vast majority of the construction season, but there's no, you know, it's not an emergency or anything like that.
Madam Mayor, the only reason, reason why I ask, and maybe this is something that we could put on our consent agenda for next week, I'd like a chance just to review that for council's benefit. Warren provided me a copy of the letter that I think he sent to some of the stakeholders that I really appreciate you sharing. In it, it speaks to a couple of rewording of language. I just would like to have an opportunity to review that before I give that thumbs up. I don't have any concerns, but just having the opportunity to review that before we approve it, and so I don't know if there's other questions or comments, but I'm happy to make a motion if there's not.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Nary.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh, it might be helpful, too, for a future, if we attach a resolution to it. Many times, people come back and look and want to determine, well, when did they do that? When did that change? And so if we have a resolution from a tracking mechanism, that'll be a little easier for the future for other people if that becomes a question.
Great.
So we could do that, too, for next week.
We'll bring a resolution back next week.
Okay.
Great. Thanks, Warren. Appreciate your work on this.
Yeah, you're very welcome. Thank you.
Also, under Public Works, we have Dell Bold House.
Also, Madam Mayor, members of council, you can see we're digging deep into the bench strength of Public Works tonight.
The hitters.
Before, before we jump into the amendment request, I just, I just wanted to take an opportunity to make a couple of comments. This next budget amendment comes in a, in a base budget line item, and we budget those annually based on our historical needs. We don't add additional money in there in anticipation, or feel like we have to build a, you know, a hedge fund or anything like that. And so we rely upon this amendment tool evidently quite often to help cover those unforeseen things that come up. As a matter of example, for this specific line item, we last year did not spend $50,000 in that line item, and it was returned to the undesignated ending fund balance for, for the enterprise fund. This year, unfortunately, we, we need a little bit more, and that's what I'm here to, to talk to you about. So you have before you a budget amendment request for $57,750. That coincidentally is almost the same amount of money that we took out of this line item to deal with the Bitter Creek Lagoon issue that we were faced with last fall. So I think we feel like we really nailed this budget very close to our needs until that came up and took 60 grand out and relocated it to another account on us. So we've detected a couple of things in our sewer system that have to have attention right away. We are progressing on those projects with the preliminary efforts. We need to get them done. The request is for $57,000 for the three items that are identified here, and we're requesting your approval to secure that funding so that we can get those items repaired in the sewer system and manhole system. So with that, I would stand for any questions.
When you said we nailed it, I heard undercover Ross in that statement or something.
You know, some people say I do sound like him, but it's probably coincidental.
It's weird, yeah.
Look who you.
Yeah.
Any questions by council?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Miss Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the budget amendment for the amount of $57,750 for wastewater sewer line and manhole repair.
Have a motion in a second to approve the request under Item 9G for the budget amendment of $57,750. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer. Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
All ayes was carried.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dell. Item 10A is Ordinance 19-1825. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this ordinance by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance number 19-1825, an ordinance H. 2018-0097, Smith Rezone, for the rezon of a parcel of land being a portion of Block 3 of F.A. Norris's Third Edition, as filed for record in the Office of the Ada County Recorder, Boise, Idaho, in Book 6 of Platts at Page 289, lying in the northwest one-quarter of Section 7, Township 3, North, Range 1 East, Boise, Meridian, the City of Meridian, Ada County, Idaho. Establishing determining the land use zoning classification from CC, Community Business Zoning District, to OT, Old Town Zoning District, in the Meridian City Code. Providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission, as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Council, is there, are there any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Move that we approve Ordinance number 19-1825 with suspension of rules.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Councilwoman Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borden.
Aye.
Anything under Item 11? If not, I would entertain a motion under Item 12 for executive session.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borden.
We'll be going to executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74206, 1F, J, B, 1A, yeah, 1A, B, F, and J.
B?
B.
I didn't hear B. Okay. Second?
B, A, J, F.
F, J, A, and B. Okay. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borden.
Aye.